December eighteenth, the time is six o'clock. The meeting will come to order. Debbie, please call the roll.
Chairperson Archie.
Counselperson Archie.
Counselperson Bax.
Here.
Chairperson Archie. Perry, sorry. I'm like stuck on that, sorry.
Here.
Chairperson last.
Here.
Counselperson AJ.
Here.
Okay, uh, Tracy Bax will say the prayer today.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the, uh, the time is six oh two, December eighteenth. Uh, this will have a public hearing relative to Restore New York Communities Initiative, municipal grant program application submitted by Niagara County Center of Economic Development to support the redevelopment of five nineteen Kiuga Drive, Niagara Falls, New York. Debbie, do you have a list of speakers?
Yes, I do.
Now, first speaker, please.
The first speaker is Ken Hamilton.
That's chairperson Ken Hamilton. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, my comment would be not enough information to come to any conclusion or to even discuss this issue. I don't know, there is nothing there on the paperwork that indicates what we're talking about, what is the five nineteen project, the Kiuga project, or any of those things. And perhaps it's my fault, I'm the guy who actually had the city put the agendas online, I didn't look at it, I was looking at these other issues that are facing us today. But I would say is that what we need to have more information if we're going to speak on anything on a public hearing. Uh, because many people might have come in, do not even know what that, that we're going to have on, and they may want to speak on it and ask the same questions that anyone who would come to the, uh, the address right now and, and ask, well, what is this project? We can't speak on something of which we know nothing. But that seems to be part and parcel to the way that things have been going in the city for several years is that the people in the dark about everything and just go ahead and move behind them and do what you want to do. So, what I have to say is that all I'm asking for is in the future, that if we're going to discuss something, that we make sure that we have the information out there, and it probably is. It probably is. Item one? Twenty, I didn't get a, uh, I didn't get that paper. All right, but thank you. Well, I know, I'm the guy who put the council's website online, but I just didn't look at it, I was looking at other pressing issues. But thank you very, and the podium is another one of my projects. I mean, you gotta get involved, but it's gonna be the same, uh, for the next resolution, or rather, the public, uh, speaking, uh, session on the other issue that you have off. So, you know, no need to call me, I hope that this covers both, that, uh, we need to somehow be able to get the information. This was such a hot topic and everything else that we're going to discuss, that I did not take any time. I am remiss for not doing so, and so, I'm not blaming anyone. Thank you.
That was the only speaker on that agenda number.
Okay. Then it says, uh, six oh six, and since there are no other speakers, the meeting is now closed. We're moving on to the next item, which is now six oh six. Uh, this is a public hearing relative to submission of the application to the Empire State Development for Financial Assistance under Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Program to Support the Demolition of the Parking Ramp Located at six twenty tenth Street to Facilitate Further Development. Okay, do we have a list of speakers for that?
It was just Mr. Hamilton, Ken Hamilton.
Can I change my list?
Sure.
Six twenty is the parking ramp, right?
Yes.
We're gonna tear that down?
Not we, no. The hospital threw a grant.
We put a lot of money from the city into that ramp in the years gone by. So then where will people park? There, is there an answer? Can you answer that? Anybody answer? We're gonna tear down the ramp, which is almost always full all of the time. And there are offices on the top level. A surface lot, but the reason that they built the parking ramp was because they did not have enough surface area. Since then, they have expanded the footprint by putting in, uh, additional, the clinic and, and other things right on that campus. So where will the, where will the people park? It, i- is that any of our business, or why are we having this? Do we have any control over this or anything? It's, huh, so why are we having this public hearing?
Mister, we, Mister Hamilton, we normally don't answer these, these questions, but there was an article in the newspaper, this is just a step in a longer, of a long process.
Okay, well, then I will answer that adamantly against the reduction of parking in downtown Niagara Falls and all of the accidents and injuries that are gonna have to be treated at that hospital as people are getting out of their cars in the streets, the accidents and everything else that's going to occur, simply because you're going to a process to make a bigger, I don't know, more offices or, or things like that. Yeah, uh, yeah, there's offices on the top, uh, you brought that up, Mr. Perry, is that I don't see, we put a lot of money in that hospital continuously, we gave them a lot of leeway, we've expanded the footprint, now they could put awnings over the sidewalks and all of these other things. I'm saying that this, and that we should move cautiously to make sure that before we take away a parking space, to put in more offices, that we've already facilitated where we're going to put the newer, bigger parking, or where they are, the newer, bigger parking lot, otherwise, there's gonna be all kinds of traffic issues, incidences, et cetera, et cetera, and, uh, pretty upset neighbors who cannot get, park their car where they need to park their car. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only speaker.
Okay, so, uh, being no further speakers, uh, meeting is closed at six ten. Okay. Uh, moving on to item number three, uh, I'm sorry, we, you know, we have, uh, presentation, for, uh, Ms. Nicole Dyer, representing, uh, Paws in the Falls this evening, the town of Wheatfield, uh, Ms. Dyer, are you here?
Good evening, council. Paws in the Falls Animal Complex Incorporated is situated at twenty seventy Kiuga Drive, Niagara Falls, New York, one four three zero four. It is a nonprofit organization established with a mission to offer and secure the nurturing haven for rescued animals of Niagara Falls. Our facility spans over three point three acres of grassland within Niagara County, housed with an eleven thousand square foot building. Next slide, please. To ensure the safety and the welfare of our dogs and our care, our facility will be equipped with a generator to address any unforeseen power outages. Additionally, we have installed live camera feed for comprehensive surveillances across all areas, enhancing safety measures for both our dogs and our staff. Next slide, please. Our commitment is to provide, maintain, and operate a safe haven for our rescued animals, ensuring compliance with Article Seven of New York State Ags and Markets Laws. Our staff is comprised of two licensed veterinary technicians, which are registered with New York State and possessing over thirty-five years of combined experience with ongoing professional development in veterinary medicine and accredited institutions such as the American Veterinary Medical Association and the American Animal Hospital Association. I, Nicole Dyer, the incoming president, facility director, bring a wealth of experience to my role, with a strong foundation in animal care, including degrees in surgical technology from Charicure College, a bachelor's of science in veterinary technology from Madi University. I have enhanced my skills in both emergency and veterinary medicine and in general practice since twenty nineteen. I have also collaborated extensively with Western New York Animal Rescues, demonstrating a deep commitment to animal welfare. Next slide, please. Paws in the Falls Community promises to create a nurturing environment where each animal receives love and attention and medical care they need to thrive. Next slide, please. We are unwavering in our commitment to transparency and accountability in every aspect of our animal care, to ensure the highest standards of welfare to colla- we have collaborated closely with New York State Department of Ags and Markets, which we strictly adhere to the New York State Animal Welfare Act and companion canal, companion animal care standards, and maintain a strong partnership with New York State Animal Protection Federation. Our recent collaboration with the New York State Animal Protection Federation has garnered positive feedback in our facility's progress. Impressed by our dedication, our cons, our consult has offered ongoing support to ensure full compliance with the upcoming rigorous twenty twenty-five requirements. We have also partnered with other animal, other animal shelters to strengthen our network and share resources. Through these essential partnerships and our relentless pursuit of improvement, we are dedicated to providing an exceptional quality of life for every animal entrusted in our care. We are proud to partner with leading animal welfare organizations such as Matties University, Best Friends Network, the ASPCA Pro, UC Davis, Cornell University, these are just to name a few. These collaborations grant us access valuable expertise and resources, enabling us to provide the highest level of care for the animals. These partnerships ensure that we stay up to date on best practices, enhance our staff training, and ultimately create a more positive and enriching environment for the animals in our care. Next slide, please. Our commitment to the community, we are committed to making a positive impact on the community through three key initiatives. One, partnering with Western New York Heroes, their Positive for Heroes program. In collaboration with Western New York Heroes, we support their Positive for Heroes program with re, with our rescue dogs and trains them to serve as service animals for veterans in need. This initiative not only provides a purpose for the dogs, but also our veterans and, and the support that they deserve. Second, our community outreach support, we are dedicated to giving back to the community through the range of programs designed to assist both animals and their owners. We are offering low cost or free core vaccines with spay neuter clinics to promote health and, and to help control overpopulation. We are providing CPR and first aid training for residents of Niagara County, ensuring both pets and their owners are prepared for any unforeseen emergencies. We have also partnered with Western New York Food for Paws for pet food assistance for families in need, helping to ensure that these pets are properly cared for during difficult times. We has all, we have also partnered with BOSI's Animal Science Programs to provide internship opportunities, offering hands-on experience to students pursuing careers in animal care. And of course, we have volunteer program that invites the community members to contribute their time and their skills in support of animal welfare. Through our valid partnerships with Western New York Food for Paws, we are able to provide vital support for families in need of ensuring that their beloved pets receive necessary food supplies. This collaborative effort allows us to ins, allows us to assist and is on an as-needed basis, helping to relieve the burden of families and ensure that no pet goes hungry. Together, we're making a meaningful impact in our community and keeping pets healthy and happy. Through these initiatives, we aim to strengthen our community and improve the lives of both animals we care for and the families that we're serving. Next slide, please. We are committed to being a part of the solution of Niagara Falls. The current situation is dire, as our community's rescues and shelters are at capacity, leaving many animals stranded on our streets. The existing vendor can only hold seventeen dogs, which is far from sufficient. Our new New York State Ags and Market approved facility is ready to step in immediately or on an as-needed emergency basis to provide a safe haven for the lost and rescued pets. We are fully prepared and equipped to take on the animals of Niagara Falls and ensure they receive the care that they need. Additionally, ensuring that no animal in our community is left without the support and care that they deserve. We have sought guidance from the Niagara SPCA for their expertise and support, given their prior management of the Niagara Falls contract and their familiarity with the necessary elements to effectively provide these services. Through our community partnerships, we believe that we cannot, that we cannot only provide a solution for the city's dog sheltering issue, but make a meaningful dis, but make a meaningful difference in the lives of the animals in our community. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, uh, we'll have the public speakers on agenda items. Do we have a, a list of items?
Yes, we do, Chairperson Perry. The first person on the list is Emily Walter, and she would like to speak on agenda number ten.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Niagara SPCA to speak on the approval of the extension to the city's dog control and boarding services agreement with the pit check. Just two days after the last council meeting, the SPCA took in two more Niagara Falls dogs. A city resident found two strays in her back alley on fifteenth street. She called Niagara Falls Dispatch and was told no one was available to pick up the dogs. It was a cold night and the dogs were thin, so the finder did what any good Samaritan would do. She loaded the dogs into her car and she took them to the SPCA because the city was of no help. An SPA, SPCA staff member explained the arrangement. The city's dogs go to Grand Island by way of the police and instructed her to call dispatch. The finder told staff that the city refused pickup, so the SPCA staffer called dispatch to hear it firsthand on a recorded call, which I'll share with you now.
Two dogs that ran into the yard, they don't belong to us. Someone come pick them up. They're strays in the city, all locals. So do you have a, I mean, I know that we have police officers pick dogs up and take them to the holding facility for the pit check? Do you have someone? Okay. What's your name?
Um, Liliana Melendez.
Liliana Melendez.
And what's the address?
Eleven fourteen fifteenth street.
Eleven fourteen fifteenth street. Okay.
And your call is from where exactly?
Niagara SPCA, but we're not your holding facility, we cannot take the dogs, we will get in trouble with the state and they'll shut us down. Then we won't be able to help any dogs. And then you'll just have a bunch of dogs running around the city of Niagara Falls that no one can take care of, no one can pick up.
Well, we kind of already got there anyway.
Yeah, we've been taking the dogs, but we can't take anymore, we're so full, we're setting up crates and we can't do that, we're getting dinged by the state.
Well, I put the call back in and if that's what's saying, then maybe, uh, so somebody they take, uh, take your dogs in and they kind of give the ownership there.
No, no, that's actually, that's a crime, you can't steal someone else's dog, she'd go to jail for that.
Well, they walked into her yard.
So, what's, I can, I mean, we can drop them off. That's fine, we don't have a problem, I can drop them off in your yard if you don't mind, and then they're yours.
Why don't you do that?
Sure, give me the address and I'll make sure you're in line.
I'm not gonna do anything.
Okay, that's fine, what's your name?
All right.
Can you tell me your name? Okay, thanks, I'll call you right back.
So there are several telling points that come from this telephone call. Number one, the dispatcher is well aware of the city's dog control and sheltering problem. She indicates stray dogs are already running all over the city with no one to care for them. Second, the dog control officer is not on duty right now is the excuse whether the officer is or isn't actually on duty. He avoids these calls because he has nowhere to take the dogs. Police officers don't pick up dogs after hours, which is new. They had twenty-four seven access to the SPCA. But again, we know this is just an excuse for the frequent problem of no room at the end. Dispatchers resort to saying anything to get off the call. They are powerless and become targets when the public is frustrated by the current dog crisis in the city. The most outrageous thing said during the call is when the dispatcher indicates the finder has provided some amount of care, the dogs walked into her yard, so she has ownership now. From a call that came in the week of Thanksgiving, we know that landlords share the same ownership according to the city's DCO. Everyone seems responsible, except for the city. This system is badly broken, and it'll remain that way until something changes. The city does not have the resources with its current vendor, or its DCO for that matter, to shelter the stray dogs in the city. Dogs are left to roam the streets, and this situation will become devastating once really winter sets in. Tonight, you get to decide if the lives of animal in your city matter. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Barone, and the agenda items are all.
It's been almost a year since I've been coming here to the podium, not because I have a personal grievance with a person I haven't met, but because I value humans and animals alike. I came here not knowing Janine, Nicole, not having an agenda of any kind, but realizing there was a lot more to what I was thinking and feeling, and I verified all of that information over this past year. I came here originally because I myself, seeing that the animal control officer was not doing his job, it started in November for me, when I became very upset over a dog being left chained to a tree with two padlocks on its neck. I called the police station, they said they were aware, and they were going to give him the information again. I spoke to the officer many times, because like I said, I have a background in rescue, both wildlife and domestic, started a rescue, Diamonds in the Rough, was one of the founding members, and volunteered my time back in two thousand and twelve to help make the SPCA no kill. People call me all the time for help, but that particular dog really was the breaking point for me. I have not seen any difference since the pit check has taken over this contract, it is, if not worse. I hope that you guys really, really take into consideration what you are voting tonight. Not only have I become friends with the people that stand before this podium every single meeting, they have great fore to do, they love animals, I've seen it for myself, I trust them, I would trust them with my own animals, um, they, they give great care to animals, they love them, all of them. They've done a lot of hard work to get where they're at now, and they deserve, and the animals, above all, deserve to have someone that cares, that has the means and the facility and the time to nurture every single one of them, even if it's just temporary. They're ready to step in, and they have a lot of people backing them, a lot of organe, good organizations backing them as well, for anything that they need. They're ready to foster relationships in this community, and they already have. They stop what they're doing, ten, eleven o'clock at night, midnight, Janine is answering the phone for the Paws in the Falls to help direct people in this community. I know, because I've been on the phone with her when she's answered her secondary phone. You don't get that. She sleeps at the facility with a dog that was ours from euthanasia. I don't know anybody that would do that. It breaks my heart, because that dog that I referred to, that was chained to the tree with padlocks on its neck, I was told, it has food and water, I'll be following up. And guess what? I followed up, I realized everything that he told me was an absolute lie, because I talked to the property manager of that property, I found out that dog was dumped. And the dog control officer, he ended up with it, he took it to his friend's house, and it remained there for weeks, it had no teeth, was about two years old, it had scars on its neck, really bad, it had patches of bald spots on it, its nails were about an inch long. It was a nice dog, as I'm told, and I have the whole entire messages from this woman that had the dog. When they didn't want the dog anymore, they had to feed it pure rate food, because it couldn't even chew. It was very badly abused. The dog disappeared in the city through foils, I have no records of that dog, they've been omitted intentionally, because I know when that dog was picked up, according to that woman, the whole month of December was completely missing from my records. But there is a euthanasia report. That dog never had a chance, once it was picked up, and it's very sad. The officer told me that the dog was microchipped and that they The officer told me that the dog was microchipped and that they had located the owner.
Thank you, Ms. Barone.
That was also a lie.
The next speaker is Vincent Holley, Agenda All.
Good evening, illustrious council. I just want to say to the people of Niagara Falls and to the council and to anyone else who wants to listen, we will always be a city that has two distinct branches of government, the legislative branch and the executive branch. Where are you coming from, Vincent? As I look into, as I look at this whole agenda, man, especially this Agenda Item Number Two, the words of the great John McEnroe come to mind, the great tennis player. You cannot be serious. So we just, we just heard a presentation. We just heard a personal account. We've been on this thing for a year or two and we're still going to do this building? And failure to approve this recommendation will require the city to refund the four point two million dollars. Who cares? Who wants to, I said we shouldn't spend this money, we do it in the first place. And maybe, and maybe this would be a gotcha moment. Maybe this would be a gotcha moment. Do we have a drawing? Do we have a sketch? Do we have a popsicle stick model? Do we have a crayon drawing? Oh, somebody's gonna get me. Cannot be serious, the great John McEnroe. Rolling off to Agenda Item Number Six, again, eight million dollars. Exactly. Do we, do we have a drawing? Do we have a sketch? Do we have a three D rim? Did it come make a presentation? Did it give us a popsicle stick stay out? How about a crayon draw? You cannot be serious. And to vote yes, Agenda Item Number Two, to vote yes on that, this trade was to the city of Niagara Falls. Trade us. Trade us. Agenda Item Number Ten, to vote yes on this, to extend this contract with the same vendor we've been, that hasn't came to make a presentation before this council. What else can we do with that four point two million dollars? Oh, maybe we can give it to a partner. Opportunity cost. If we're spending four, if we're wasting four point two million dollars on this pit check here, on this vendor, we can't plug this hole over there so that we can do a partner. Something that, that could really be used, whether or not you like it or not. That's not my point. The point is opportunity cost. Well, if we can't do this, if we do this, we can't do that. And to extend this contract, trade us. The fact that, the fact that we have a legislative branch that has power to say no. Trade us. Agenda Item Number Twelve. It says we want to designate a hundred thousand dollars to URA. Okay, how much, it says, how much is available of this casino money? Because if you look at the budget and you look at the fact that we have no money, how much money is left from this ninety-nine age? How much is left? I'm asking for a friend. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. What does this mean? Is this, are we, okay. Are we just trying to rezone one street, fourth street, or are we, are we spot zoning? Is there a reason we're doing this? I, I read, I read it, but what's the end game? What's the ultimate goal? Is this good governance? Is there a vision of a plan, an attempt? Is this fire ready aim again? Are we just gonna shoot then hope the bullet just does some Angelina Jolie wanted styling, hit the target? Maybe it should be a gotcha moment. I, I, I just don't understand. Maybe everyone else does. I don't. Agenda Item Number Seventeen. I'm down for business. Is that what this is going for? Is there a, is there a plan for abandoning this? I saw the map. That's fine. I just don't know. And I would like to go. Just a question that I have that I'm just asking, I'm just curious. Just asking for a friend. What, what is that abandoning? Maybe there's something I missed. I missed it all the time. It could be wrong. I just missed it. I'm just curious. The Underground Railroad sounds great. I'm dying, I love history. No one will love history more than me. But I, I saw the map too and I saw the plan. Are we putting up anything forth for this? Do we have, do we have to abandon anything else or are we just converting our monuments as part of this plan? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeanne Gallop, Agenda Number Ten.
Hello, I've been here for one year now, talking about the same topic. Two of you up there were sitting in the crowd waiting for your time up at the podium for the following meeting. And were very involved in the topic and very interested in what was going on. And now, as you can see, not interested at all. Not even looking, doesn't care what anybody's saying. This doesn't matter. And we got the same three yeses all the time. I had a lady call me last night and said, I have a dog that's been standing in my backyard for two days. I've called Niagara Falls. They tell me there's nothing they can do. There's nobody to get the dog. She's begging me to come and get the dog. I would love to get the dog, but as Tom pointed out in A to Market Article Seven, I can't. And I feel so bad because it's freezing for this dog. They tried to put things out there. I said, ma'am, you know, you can't. They said, well, Officer Booth, they told is in court and from court he's going home, so maybe try again tomorrow. Apparently she did and the dog is still in her yard as far as I know. This goes on every day. I get a call, ten o'clock at night. Last night I got a call. Cat was hit by a car. I was the only person that answered. I called every facility around. Didn't even matter. She called here in town and she called everywhere. I called somebody that knew about that and it's actually Tanya because she knows everything. She told me what to do, to tell them. I told them and the cat was picked up by, shocking, the SPCA. And the SPCA picked up that cat and met its medical needs at ten o'clock at night. That's the things that should happen because what if that was your cat? And I know I've heard up there it's just dogs, it's just cats, but it's, it's someone's property. It's something somebody cares about. You continue just to sit up there and to say yes to everything, to everything. It would make, if we weren't talking about the dogs, just business. And you, I said to you, I'd like to, to give you a half a million dollars to fill this cup up, but the cup is filled to the rim. And then you turn around and tell me, well, we're gonna renew that. We're gonna give you another half a million dollars. For what? My cup's full, right? It's full. These aren't dogs. This is straight. You did, the backdoor deal became, you know, an emergency, even though, and we've proven this. February, the year, the same year that you did sign something in August. February, she went up to a podium in Grand Island and said she had three point three thousand dollars of revenue coming to Grand Island that she had at the contract, which she didn't get till six months later. I came up to this podium because she, the facility was drugging dogs. We've proven that. It's not hearsay. If it was hearsay, it's a year now. Nobody sued me for saying that. So it's, and I've given you the facts. She then marched in here with her posse, went up to this podium and told you. Watch the tape. It's on YouTube. That at any time, any police officer could bring a dog to her facility. But yet the police officers, when they have the time, bring it to the SPCA. There's no signage, there's no, for one year, what has she done for your community, for the dogs? It's her and Donnie Booth keeping on the down low. Don't tell anybody to bring their dogs. Don't even mention the word pit check. Just let them all go to the SPCA. Have you seen any advertisements? She did a thing at a casino for Rescue Buffalo in the city of Tonawanda. She goes to the mayor's office in the city of Tonawanda once a month, once a week, shows a dog, does all these things. She's done nothing for the community. She's done nothing to help the dog situation except if it's a puppy or a cute dog, we can take those. If it's not, send it to the SPCA. Or now the new thing for the last couple of months is call Paws and Falls. Okay, you saw her presentation. You don't even need a DCO anymore with the new facility. That would put another cop on the road. Put another police officer being able to take care of people because when you call there, they say people are first. Then take that police officer to the people and let us handle the dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Grabowski, Agenda Item Number Ten.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak about the dog shelter and the extension of the pit check contract. I urge you to search for another vendor and not extend the contract. I propose choosing a new vendor for the current Niagara Falls Dog Shelter. I propose to find a vendor who can hold more than just seventeen dogs. I encourage the council to find a vendor who is more professional and who will operate within the contract guidelines with professionalism and the life of the dogs in mind. I wasn't gonna come public about this, but I think it's time to mention how unprofessional and this vendor is and she's not transparent. I don't know how often that any council member or anybody has gone to inspect the facility. But I've been a victim and a target of her unprofessionalism, meaning the pit check. I went there on November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four to see the dogs available for adoption, foster, and also ask about volunteer opportunities. When Kelly Swagel opened the door, she had her phone in her waistband of her pants and with her phone camera facing me, obviously recording me without my knowledge or who knows why she was recording me. I don't know. While I know now, she said she is not open to the public and everything is online. According to her contract, she is supposed to be open to the public. Let me see, I'll read a break from the contract. To facilitate, facilitate connecting the dogs, the shelter, see dogs eligible, current or future owners or foster care parents. Pit check will open the shelter to the visiting public from ten AM to four PM Monday through Thursday and nine AM to one PM on Saturdays excluding designated holidays and special events and weather emergencies. She's not open to the public. Every question I asked, she said she's not open to the public and everything is online. I asked a few more questions and she continued to say everything is online. I didn't understand why. She was not welcoming or, and she was short with me. And it seemed odd and weird that she would be recording me in the first place for no reason. I went there in good faith to do something positive for the dogs. I'm all about the dogs. I don't care about the drama between all this dog shelter stuff. That's not what I'm about. I'm not anywhere in that circle. I care about the dogs. As I said the last time, I have, I'm a combat veteran. I have an ESA. I did have a working dog. So it's something I'm passionate about is helping the dogs and I am looking for a new service dog. I didn't understand why she was like short with me and it seemed weird. Why would she be recording me? I went there in good faith. I left to go to the brick oven. I saw the sheriff, the Erie County Sheriff over in her parking lot while I was sitting in my car in the parking lot of the brick oven. I took my phone out to record over there to see what was going on. Me being a combat veteran, I always want to be aware of what's going on. I then saw her recording me from her facility to my car. Again, I didn't understand why because I was in the brick oven parking lot, not bothering anybody. The sheriff then drove over to the parking lot of the brick oven and questioned me about me being there earlier. And she thought I was sent there by Mrs. Barone and Mrs. Gallop. I drove across the street to, to ask her what's going on and why I'm being targeted by her and the sheriff as harassing her. After a few words, or let me back up. She was, when I went over there, she was recording me and the whole conversation. The, she recorded the whole interaction, whatever, and she then posted it online. What professional business posts this stuff online? For me to be.
Thank you, Ms. Grabowski. Your time's up.
She's unprofessional. We should find a new vendor. Thank you.
The next speaker on the Agenda Item is Ken Hamilton. Agenda Item Ten and.
At all, it's a number two that says.
Thank you.
All of the other things that pertain to it. The nation's founders caused for slow deliberation and making difficult decisions. Clearly, the conversation about Dog Pound in the park has not at all been delivered. Real question is, and forgive me for having to read, I did have surgery and it was brain surgery and so I know that I have one and I'm not certain about a whole bunch of other folks also have one. I have two. So forgive me if I scared words or anything like that and the reason I have to read. Real question is, as a dog pound in the park actually saw the root causes of why we need one? Who calls the need? Where we need one? At what price and cost should it be? Who should operate it and under what philosophy should it be operated? We fight like dogs and cater to the issue of doing what, humanely providing the shelter for friends, largely because of the actions of irresponsible citizens. But how many fines, arrests, and adjudications have occurred as a result? The four million dollars, will four million dollars solve or retaliate the problem? What will be the long-term operation and maintenance cost of the project? Which is a good reason why we should give this to a vendor so that we don't have to worry about those structural costs. But what will be the long-term operation maintenance cost of the project? What animal senses is that we take it as a measurement of even qualifying and quantifying the need? What is also germane in the decision of the project is if it will be a three-day kill factor or a no-kill factor, which would be baffling to me that we, well, we allow humans to kill humans, but we don't want humans to kill dogs. Furthermore, and I had dogs all of my life and I still cry about losing my dog when I was eight years old. So it's not that I'm an animal actually. Furthermore, is a dog pound consistent with any covenant on Mr. Hyde's grant of that area of the park or should the shelter, if needed at all, be placed in the recently claimed former DPPW skills area on the north side of Porter Road next to the foot rail road yard? And if so, then could it be a shared facility of the surrounding towns including our yard? Quite simply, in the process of trying to build and operate a facility for animals, we are nowhere near in making a good decision on this project. Slow and deliberate thought should have been had on this and other issues and done so before we created a very expensive operation, especially the decision on a project for which no one who actually has a vote on this development has ever thought about, moreover, have ever built an animal shelter in their lives. If Niagara Falls is to grow, and then our officials must first grow up. Our city council must return to a committed form of council, whereas each council person forms and heads up issues filed in various areas of our city's charter. And yes, their time and so long should be adequately compensated. And they need to have their own full-time administrative assistant office staffer. Such issues as detail here on Sam, what that's something else. Such issues as detail here on site, what that's something else. But in doing nothing more than how we operate the city, the solutions to the problems will only create subsequent problems that will loom larger and less controllable and will fall into the future collapse of even less qualified decision makers. Now, what will your arguments be about the above statement? What kind of deliberation that you've made? It used to be that the city councilman had his, in this room next door, the committee of the whole. Each city councilman would take a segment of the charter and in this issue, he would have, he or she would have formed a group so that they could sit down and really think about these issues. Now, as I listen to the rest of the arguments in these last 50 seconds, is that if we have someone who's willing to take the risk and have the ability to do so, why would we build extra infrastructure in the city and obligate ourselves to mine it up? After all, if someone else is willing to do the work for us, then that's exactly what should happen. But if we have to look and say, we're gonna go $4.5 million and that is just always cost overruns, then what we're doing, you know, that I don't know. That somebody need to take a closer look at why we are doing this because it does not solve any of the causes of problems of why we have dog problems, cat problems, et cetera. And it's irresponsible citizens and who's finally measured the fines against the enforcement.
Thank you. Your time's up. The next speaker is Nicole Dreyer. Agenda Item 10.
Hello. So again, we've been coming here for a little over a year and still talking about the issue that the Niagara Falls dogs are in a serious crisis. And going into the winter months, soon we're gonna find dogs frozen to death on the streets. You're gonna find cats frozen in the streets. You're gonna have owners, not even owners, good Samaritans, doing the job that you pay someone $20,000 a month for. I don't know about you, but for me, that's very hard to swallow. I can't watch our phones ring off of the hook of people pleading for someone to come and help them. I don't know how many of you can sit there and still vote yes, still vote no, whatever. You're not looking at the long term. We have a facility that has been inspected by New York State Ags and Market. We are good to go. We've worked really hard to provide a safe and nurturing place for the animals that come into our facility. You've heard the story about Mindy coming from North Collins who was about to be euthanized. Hours before that, they were pleading for someone to come and help them. We've taken on this dog who's become a great dog. And just by the simple fact that we took the extra time with this animal to ensure that she will be adoptable. Again, our facility is ready. Do you guys even know how much it's going to cost? Operating costs? Yes, it's $4.5 million for a building that needs to be retrofitted. You have no plans, no diagrams. You need to think about this vote that's about to be happening. Because does the cost outweigh the issue and the crisis that we have? Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker on Agenda Items is Arlene Dos and she'll be speaking on Agenda Item 4.
Good evening. I very welcome her to speak on either every one of these Agenda Items. But I specifically wanted to speak on the John Duke's HVAC system because I need some clarification and some understanding as to why we are voting for over a million dollars for something that has already been repaired recently here in the city of Niagara Falls. I would trace went over because those elders were using small heating things to keep that building warm. So they went in and replaced that HVAC system. I don't understand because a lot of this seems to be something that that seems to be some type of backdoor dealing. Let's say we spending a million dollars here and maybe we spend $380,000. Where's the rest of it going? Because HVAC system for a building, a brand new one for the size of the John Duke building is a little over $350,000. I'm talking a complete renewed HVAC system. So why is this agenda say over a million dollars? You don't understand why it is the residents here in the city of Niagara Falls don't understand what's going on up here on this bench. When you put out bids like this, when we know that we can get many things done in the city of Niagara Falls besides the park for a lot less than what you're sitting up there voting for that can be done? A pole barn for $8 million? Can we really be serious about that? I went over to DPW today. The majority of those buildings over there do at least little to no repairs in that DPW. Understand that there is a huge equipment that they need one space for that's required and the majority of that information came directly from someone who was just working here in the city of Niagara Falls. Again, the question is, I understand you guys get these Agenda Items at the last minute, but is it at any time that you are informed in advance enough to say, let me utilize the $15,000 for gas money and drive around the city to see, is this really worth our people money's being spent on? Because quite frankly, that's all you could do with the $15,000 for a year is utilize it for your gas money to go see everything that you're voting on. What are you doing? If I were wanting to come and get a million dollars for you for HVAC system, would you take it out of your pocket and say, you need it, here it go? Because I'm ready to have all your open up checkbook because you could spend money any other way you want to spend it, millions of dollars. When we fail to pay the escort people to continue working on our streets. Now that's a shame. And that came from a city employer. That's why our streets did not get finished because you did not make payment to the people that were delivering the escort. And we're talking about dog shelters and $8 million pole barns? Somebody, I got three degrees, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I got the wrong ones. I should have got a hustle degree. Because that's what's going on here in the city of Niagara Falls. You are really, really hustling the people with no concern whatsoever. And that excuse, oh, the mayor, I gotta decide, the mayor, why do we have a council? How about we just fold up the booth, get off the bench, tell the mayor to sign the papers, say, okay, people, this is what it is. How about that, Jim? Just say, this is what we're gonna do. It's not making any sense. And you have too many angry citizens here paying their taxes that wants answers and we can't get it.
The shelter will cost three times what the SPCA costs.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Three times the amount the SPCA charges for your own shelter. You got that, honey? Three times the amount they can pay the SPCA to run your own shelter. I hope you have that.
Okay, are there-- Moving on to administrative updates. Do we have any administrative updates?
No, I see.
Okay. Community happenings? Any announcements for community happenings?
Wednesday night at Packer Court Community Center tomorrow starts at 4 o'clock.
Did you get that? Okay, anything else?
Mr. Perry, I have put my name--
Dante? Dante?
We have, let's see, this is Wednesday, December 18th. Which is today. Never mind, actually it's going on right now. But it's 70 years later Brown versus Board of Education. It's kind of a discussion regarding how to increase literacy rates in school. Yes. And it's always via Zoom. So I just got that message. I guess anyone, if it's still going on--
Miles, would you repeat that because you were distracted by conversation items?
All right, so it's NASA, 70 years later Brown versus Board of Education. This is actually going on tonight at 7 o'clock. It was a Zoom meeting. So I just received it, but I understand this is a discussion on how to increase literacy rates in our schools. What I'll try to do is see if the actual video is recorded and I'll try to have that available, whether it be on social media or if we can find a site to lead people to later, so.
Does anybody else have any community happenings to announce this evening? No? Okay, moving on to our next review and adopt-- adoption of the Agenda Items. We're now at Section 4 of the Agenda. Are there any motions to amend the Agenda by roll call vote? May I have a motion to adopt the Agenda as proposed?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any opposed? Okay, Debbie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five AAs.
Five AAs, motion's adopted. Okay, we're now at Section 5, Review of the Minutes from November 20th, 2024, City Council Meeting. I'm sorry, I'm gonna back this up a little bit here. November 14th. Review of the Minutes for the special meeting, for the budget meeting work session, November 14th, if I'm not mistaken. Is there any amendments to that meeting? Does anybody review? No? Okay. And for the special meeting and budget work session number two, review of the minutes. November 25th, any changes? Does anybody have any corrections for meeting at December 20th, December 4th? If there are no corrections, then let the minutes be approved as distributed. Do we have any-- Anything from the clerk's office?
Yes. A report of licenses issued and collected made in clerk's office during November 2024 has been received with five--
And that's it, okay. Moving on to the Agenda and Action Items. We're now at the Legislative Items. Legislative Item Number 1. May I have a motion for Legislative Item Number 1?
Yes, for Item Number 1. I move the council vote to approve and determine and adopt the locally adjusted homestead and non-homestead base proportions for the city of Niagara Falls 2025 tax levy as more fully outlined in the city assessor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
I will not, I will not restate any motions unless there are requests to do so. Is there any information requests for this motion? Any opposition? Okay, now, Debbie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five AAs.
Five AAs, motion's carried. Legislative Item Number 2. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve contract awards to the four successful bidders relative to the High Park Animal Shelter construction project. Designate $4,179,225 of available ARP funds for appropriation as needed to pay those bidders, contractors, and authorize the mayor to execute agreements with each as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
Any information requests?
Second?
I'm sorry, second, or is it second?
Second.
Okay, any information requests? Okay, opposition?
Yeah, absolutely. So are we, as a council, going to ignore the alienation law? Park alienation law that really doesn't really allow us to even build the shelter in our park? Why hasn't a feasibility study been presented to the council and to the public body? Do we understand again, how much would it cost the taxpayers after this building is built? Yearly to run the facility, right? Zero transparency. Why is, and I'm not bothered by four, five minutes, I can speak as long as I need. Why is it that Item Number 10, being that it actually ties itself directly into this item? Why isn't that item put first? Because if we were to look at Item Number 10, it literally states that-- For this, for the pit check, for her to, it's almost like we're really putting her in business. It ties her directly into this building, saying that it's going to help move forward the construction of this building in High Park. So why hasn't that been, why is it all the way at the bottom? I have reasons. One, I feel like I knew my niche, I was okay, I was right. We are, not we, our administration and our mayor is putting-- We are, not we, our administration and our mayor is putting someone who's not even a local resident in business in our city, right? So, um, and again, this goes, and I can speak on this solely because, you know, it, it ties right into this same agenda item. She brought zero proof, zero evidence to any what she considered to be false claims that was raised against her. She didn't sit at that podium nor bring us one piece of paper, a video, anything to, to refute anything that was brought against her. She just brought mouth. And before we even think about building a shelter and actually becoming the overseer of a shelter, how about we work on bettering the day-to-day, uh, departments that we supposed to oversee? Like, let's look at, let's look at a few. I got some notes here. Snow removal, tree removal, um, city-owned lawn care, quality of street paving and repair. All of that is piss poor in Niagara Falls. So if we can't handle the day-to-day operations that affect the quality of life of us, our residents, our people here, how are we gonna add something that we have absolutely no experience in? We don't, none of us up here, neither the mayor nor his administration nor corporation council, has ever ran an animal shelter and has not a clue of what that even looks like, right? I have an issue, I have a big issue with the statement at the bottom because what it does is it creates this, uh, false illusion that failure to approve this recommendation will require the city to refund one, four point, uh, one, seven, nine, uh, million dollars of the total agenda item to the US Treasury. The city is not going to have to pay the Treasury a dime. This is money that is given from the, from the Treasury to be allocated toward, especially, and it's not at, really for this. This is not what that money really was for. We just find loopholes where we can kind of plug this money in. What happens is this money will just be taken back from, from the Treasury. So it's not like, it's not coming out of our budget. It's not coming out of none of your taxpaying dollars. So that whole idea to make this seem like it's a scare tactic to us is, that's not the case. We do not have to pay the Treasury back anything if we vote no tonight. One, okay? With that being said, um, I'm just trying to find out why. Um, we, we, I've heard, well, actually, uh, our city attorney may have mentioned that in twenty twenty-one, our, uh, American Rescue Plan funds had already been pretty much allocated for what it was. So everything else was to be new. Um, that was in twenty twenty-one. We didn't sign a contract with the pit chick until twenty twenty-three. So let's do the math. So if we signed a contract with the pit chick in twenty twenty-three. Okay, absolutely, absolutely. No, 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 I got, he said, I got five more minutes. He understands. He know how that work.
Yeah, it's three minutes for council members, five minutes.
Okay, you gonna give me that five minutes, uh, five seconds? Okay, enough. Like I said, um, you said that it was in twenty twenty-one that that council already approved what we were gonna spend from the ARP funds. How is it that magically this year, we're coming up with four point one million dollars from a contract that was signed in twenty twenty-three for a new shelter? Your math is not magic. Uh, understood. No, I didn't miss, no, no, absolutely, because we were talking about the park. And it was like, we can't do any new projects because back then they had already allocated all the funds. It's on the tape. Go to YouTube. You have YouTube. Go to, but don't cut me off, but, but don't, but order, point of order. He does, he does not cut me off when I'm talking. So like I said, the math is not magic. No, these, these, the timeframe, we're coming up with so many new projects and then we're taking money from other proj, you know, the, I, I forgot what street it was, off of Pine Avenue, another project that we had allocated. Well, now we're gonna take money from this project and put it here. So now it's a whole bunch of shuffling of money. And we wonder why people feel like there's corruption in government? Because there is. It's okay, you can smirk all you want, but at the end of the day, the true story is, is this, you're gonna get this work solely due to the fact is, is that we are putting something in, and what happens is, is we're, we're shoving it down the mouth of council? That's another big issue that I have. For things that had already been in place, why are we, and this goes actually for three, four, a lot of these, the ARP funding, why is it that this, the mayor and his administration chose the eleventh and a half hour to bring all of this stuff here at the very last city council meeting of the year? If it was that important, and guess what? Okay, fixing the parks and stuff, absolutely. I'm gonna vote yes for a, a lot of this because I understand that it's needed, right? But for the stuff that is necessary and that's needed, why are we at the very last minute, the mayor decides to put this on our agenda, on a twenty-item agenda, and tell us to vote on it tonight? And, and, and we're getting it at the last hour on Friday evening, right before the weekend? And then what happens, it will be, I'm gonna tell you what happened, is that Friday night weekly report, as we all seen, and we can sit back and act like we didn't see it, but the Friday night report, he's gonna throw our council under the bus. So when we vote on foolishness and then it all falls down, at the end of the day, it's gonna say, well, council voted on it. Nobody's gonna care that he brought it. We're the last say. And what we have not been is we have not been checks and balances. We have not been checks and balances. We're breaking a law. We're breaking a law. We're breaking a law. We, we, and it has been stated at that, at that podium right there about park alienation law. But nobody is like, nobody's thinking about it. Like, is it, is it okay? Cause I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna fall on the sword for the mayor. And so I guess my, my biggest thing is, is that, why is it? Why is it last minute? We don't, we, are, are we, are we, uh, are, are we, is, are they afraid of public scrutiny? Are they, are they afraid to be questioned by the community, by council, for those of us who actually care? Uh, actually, it was a, uh, 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 article that was put out that a couple of us only care. The stuff that I talk about, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little rough around the edges, but at the end of the day, it, it, it deals with the quality of life issues in, in the city of Niagara Falls. And it's things that is not about me, my foreign, no more. It's about making sure that we operate like a government is supposed to operate. We supposed to do business like a business is supposed to operate. We supposed to do an RFP and, and allow the, the, the bidding process, allow the, the competitive bidding so we can do business like the city of Niagara Falls is supposed to do. Like, you know, um, Wilson, like Lockport, like these other municipalities that SPCA pulled away from, they actually got another project, got, got it, went and got service from other people instead of trying to build a project that they have no clue of what, how it works, how it runs. We don't have a clue. That's a, that's a no for me. And this, I'm, I'm hoping and praying that my colleagues hear me.
If you use the, uh, how we could do snowplows better, how we can cut trees better, there's always, we can always do everything better.
Excuse me. I need to hear what chairperson Perry says, please. Give me some respect. I need to record this, please. Thank you.
We can do everything better. That's no question. Everything, we can always do better. So, you know, I agree. We could always do everything better. Now, as far as, you know, people say, well, you know, we have no clue of what we're doing and we, that's why we have professionals, you know, we ran a golf course that, uh, why would we be in the golf course business? Well, you know, we had a golf course that was losing money and we were operating it. We have private investors now that are running a golf course that's making money. We have a stone house over at High Park that was losing money. Now, guess what? We have people investing in it, that are running it, professionals are running it, that's making money. We have a convention center now, it's making money. You had professionals run it, they're making money. You have an animal shelter that will be run by professionals. You don't have to worry about, um, changing, changing, uh, venues on it, changing, uh, conditions of running it. We don't have to worry about that anymore. We run our own, we hire professionals. And if you read the memos, an RFP will be going out. There will be one going out. We fought for RFP, the RFP will be going out. When we have the new shelter being, being built, there will be an RFP going out. It's in the agenda, it's in the memo. That's, uh, you know, I don't, I don't have a fifteen-minute speech to go on about this, but all I can say is, RFPs will be going out. And I wasn't here for the first one. I was demanded RFP. And that's, you know, I don't know what happened before I got here, but I was demanded RFP. I don't know why the last minute showed up. I don't know why this came up at the last minute. I can't answer that for you.
Can I ask you a question? If, if you don't mind, can I ask you, because you made a very good point.
I just, I just.
It's a good point.
I just stated my point, my counterpoint to your point. That's all I have. So that's, that's all I have.
Right, and so I guess to the counterpoint, to the point that you just made.
Mr. Miles.
So hold on, so, is, hold on, wait, question. Is this, is this, hold on.
Mr. Miles.
That's a question. Can I ask a question about, uh, the rules? Is it rules?
Mr. Miles, we're not back and forth here. You stated your point, I stated my point. Now we're calling for a roll.
Is there anyone else who wants to debate?
Hold on, that's not a debate, though.
Sorry, sir, but is this a debate?
You stated your point.
You spoke, Mr. Perry spoke.
Uh, that, that's not a debate. A debate is, is that, hey, we.
Does anybody else have anything? Anybody? Please call the roll.
Good thing you had an attorney for you guys.
Councilor.
It's fine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I said from the beginning, um, we put money forward for a, a study, which we didn't see. And then there's some, no, listen, let's not, let's be respectful. Don't do that. We also had monies for another piece of the plan, which we didn't see. I don't like the location because there's other spaces that we could actually utilize. My vote, my vote is no.
Councilmember Bax?
I am not in favor of returning the money back to the federal government. We knew we were allocating money towards this project. So that was not a last-minute decision. That's come before us. And I'm gonna continue to vote yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Well, I was gonna ask a question, but now I get to, I'll make a statement. As our chairman so eloquently put it, is that there were things that we used to do and we used to own and run and we failed miserably. So what we did is we got a private contractor who actually knew what the heck they were doing and they run it now and it runs better. You said that. And that's what I was gonna ask you because we're talking about a private contractor instead of us actually buying, putting money in a space, putting money in a space that we don't really understand. We don't understand dog sheltering services. Add on. If you want, let's see, uh, um, if there, and, and when we talk about funding and we don't wanna return the funding, well, let's say we had funding that actually bought people pets. And I decided that I'm gonna take three thousand dollars out of that funding and buy you a pet skunk to put in your house as a house pet. You're probably not gonna want that pet skunk. But the money is there. And if you don't use it, you're gonna lose it. I don't want it. What we're saying is, is that if we're gonna buy something, we don't know what it's gonna look like five, ten years down the line. So we pay, yeah, four point five, yeah, it's coming from the American Rescue Plan fund and we're using it like it's just random money that's just spewing all over the place, like it's, like we can use it for anything. But we're not even looking at the long-term ramifications of what it's gonna look like financially. Our job is to make sure our city is fiscally responsible, not utilize money just because we got it to utilize. With that being said, I say no.
Councilmember Zajak?
For me, I, I personally don't equate this agenda item to our current vendor or the later agenda item. I completely understand a lot of what all of my colleagues have said up here. I guess to what Mr. Perry and Mr. Miles were saying about, you know, the city running whatever it is, golf course, um, Sal Magley, ice rink, you, you're right, the city doesn't manage them, but we own them. So to me, this would be essentially the same thing. We're gonna get a vendor that knows what they're doing to run it for us through the RFP process. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three AAs.
Three AAs, motions carried. Three AAs, two AAs.
Three AAs and two AAs.
Resolution number three. May I have a motion for resolution number three?
Sure, for item number three, I move the council vote to approve contract award to the successful general construction bidder relative to the High Park Duck Island gazebo reconstruction proj, project and designate one million one hundred fifty-two thousand five, five hundred dollars of available ARP funds for appropriation as needed to pay the bidder contractor and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with same as, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any information request? Any opposition? Call the roll, please.
Council, councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five AAs.
Five AAs, motions carried. Item number four, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, item number four, I move the council vote to approve contract awards to three successful bidders relative to the H-back controls and improvement project at the John A. Duke Senior Center designate one million one hundred eighty thousand eight hundred, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents of available ARP funds for appropriation as needed to pay these bidders, contractors, and authorize the mayor to execute agreements with each, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second? Any information request?
Has there been any work already done on the John Duke H-back, uh, system by our, uh. Trade Center?
I don't know. I, I'm hearing that for the first time this evening and I, I can't prefer or deny it. What I can tell you, though, is that, uh, two different sets of engineers, uh, looked at the John Duke Senior Center for improvements. And both Robert Griselli in our engineering department and Travel and Associates, which is our engineering contractor and consultant, uh, both looked at it. They spec out the, all the work at the John Duke Center, um, not just, uh, not just at John Duke, but you'll see their, their names appear on other agenda items. Uh, and so, uh, based on the engineering experts, this is telling us that the work is needed, that it's been bid out, uh, drawings were submitted, contractors were contacted to place their bids, and they identified the most responsible bidder. And that's, uh, who's in line to be approved. and they identified the most responsible bidder, and that's, uh, who's in line to be approved.
So how do we find out if, if, if the work was done? I mean, and, and what it actually it was? I mean, it sounds like per what Ms. Jackson is saying, and, and employee told her this, so.
Oh, that's hears, that's hearsay, and I, I don't know if it's true or not, but to find out, you would have to, you would have to.
Can we stop for a minute?
You'd have to reach out to, um, the city administrator and ask for the details about that. Ask, ask for the details.
Because I would just be curious as to what they did, and then what, like, did they patch?
If, if they did, if they patched, maybe they just worked on the heat. Someone said something about heat. Well, HVAC is more than just heat, it's, it's heat and air conditioning.
So, 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 what's today?
Eighteenth, we got, we got twelve, thirteen days.
I'm saying, I would, I would, pending further information.
Table?
Table, to, to ask, and we would just have to have a special meeting to get a response, to get it back on, but.
The reason that I would, would recommend against that is, it's not simply getting you guys to vote before December thirty-first. It also requires us to have, uh, the contracts signed. And for this, for this item, just because, let, let me back up. Someone said, well, gee, if, if we did this work ourselves, it'd be a lot less expensive. Well, that's partly a product of New York State. New York State requires that when, when you're spending this kind of money, and it's, it's not just HVAC, it's the electrical contract, and it's the general construction. So this item involves three different prime contractors, okay? So if you table this item and hope to get it back on in a special meeting, hope to get it approved, what that doesn't guarantee is that these contracts with three different vendors will be signed by December thirty-first. That's the risk you run. And I would recommend that you not take that risk based on hearsay and supposition regarding the HVAC portion of this, uh, three-part, three-part project at John Duke.
Noted, but I just feel like we, we probably need to ask the question, and why, like, if it's asked tomorrow, we can literally just do something Friday, if, if, if that's what it calls for. And I understand that there's three other portions to it, I, I, I get that. Uh, I don't think these people are gonna run away, they know they have a check coming. So I, yeah, I, I would just, I would, I would, that's what I, I would say, or I'm gonna probably vote no. If we're not gonna table. I would table it to ask the question, that's what I would do.
Are you making a motion?
I would make a motion to table, to ask the question, yes.
Make a motion to table?
To table, yeah.
Do you have a second to motion?
With a special meeting on Friday?
With the special, with the special meet, hold on, Jeff, with the, with the, with the special meeting to come back and vote on it.
You'd have to make those, well, we don't, uh, we, we can't have a special meeting this week unless we announce, we'd have to make.
Well, it would be Friday, but we have Monday or Tuesday, I mean, it's something we could do quickly.
We would have to announce Monday or Tuesday.
If we ask the question tomorrow, we have.
When would we have to announce a special meeting tonight?
No.
We could announce it Friday or Monday, I think.
Today's Wednesday.
Right.
Need information?
They're not gonna pull the contract in three days.
No, especially when they got.
Let's just get the response, I just, just get the response.
And is, is, just for clarification, is it the Greater Niagara Mechanical Contract? Is that what you're?
For the HVAC.
Okay, that's what you're questioning?
If work has been done and exactly what it was, and if it was patchwork, and they didn't do exactly what was needed, let's just go from there. I'll see that, huh?
I don't really agree with that, but if you wanna make a motion, okay, you want, so you're.
I mean, I'm making a motion, people can vote against the motion.
So the motion is Brian Archie, uh, and Mr. Archie is making a motion to table, table this?
To table, in lieu of just getting clarification.
Is there a second to table, uh, act, uh, legislative item, item number four? Is there a second to table?
I second it.
Okay. Mr. Miles has made a second to the motion to table legislative item number four, okay?
Okay, item number four, to send, to table. Councilperson Archie?
Yes.
Councilperson Bax?
I've asked questions, um, in regards to these agenda items, this is a three-part bid, and I am comfortable with the assessment that's been done to do the work.
Councilmember Miles?
It's almost like asking Stevie Wonder to drive us around the city and show us what's going on, because we don't have answers, our corporation council don't have answers, unless Ms. Bax had, unless Councilman Bax has the answer to his question, apparently she doesn't have that answer either. And so why are we voting yes for something that we still need a little bit of answers to? So it's not gonna hurt, it's not gonna, there's, what's the rush? Well, it shouldn't have been put on the last, last minute anyway, first and foremost, like I said before. So why don't we table it, and go ahead, and at least get the information that we need, so we don't look like the council that votes yes on every single thing, without having to, you know, all of the information needed to make the most educated vote. So I vote yes to table it, yes.
Councilmember Zayjack? To table the motion?
No. Councilmember Archie, you make a very good point. Mr. DeBois, I understand what you're saying about hearsay, but obviously sometimes there's value in hearsay. Um, I also did ask questions like Councilmember Bax did about this agenda item. Obviously not having, if we can call it hearsay, or, or what it may be. And my, my gut is telling me that I hope what Mr. DeBois said about us not having the contract signed is a, could be an issue. I hope that's not the case. Councilmember Archie, I hope that we can all follow up on this as soon as possible, and get the answer as soon as possible to be able to call it a special meeting. I will side with my two colleagues and vote yes.
Chairperson Perry?
I'm familiar with the process for years, and, um, I'm pretty confident that the due diligence has been done, but, uh, I would have to vote no. Nothing that makes a difference, but I vote no.
For item, agenda number four, we have three yeas and two nays.
The motion is tabled. The motion is tabled. Moving on to legislative item number five. May I have a motion?
Yes, number five. I move the council vote to approve contract awards to two successful bidders relative to the South Building Interior Renovation Project at the Hyde Park Golf Dome Annex, and designate four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents of available ARP funds for appropriation as needed to pay those success for, successful bidders and contractors, and authorize the mayor to execute agreements with each, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I have any, uh, requests for information? Any opposition?
Not the opposition, I, actually I got information, um, where, uh, actually the city of Niagara Falls was actually supposed to fulfill this contract about six years ago. So I'm actually voting yes for it. So I, it's not necessarily opposition, but I figure it's good information to actually give my colleagues, um, as well. Being that, you know, if this was something that the city was supposed to fulfill, and the city hasn't, well, now it's actually a time in our, you know, where we can actually fulfill this, uh, you know, this obligation.
And much like Councilmember Miles, my. Not really opposition, um, I just shared the point of my understanding of what this building is being used for now. I would hope with this investment of money, it's no longer used for that, um, which would be storage of equipment and things like that. For this amount of money, I hope it's utilized for something habitable, as the agenda says, it's not habitable. Yeah, so not really, uh, opposition, just cautious optimism that the building's utilized for something different.
Okay, call the roll, please.
For agenda, item number five. Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zayjack?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, motion carried. Item number six, may I have a motion, please?
Number six. I move the council vote to approve contract awards to the four successful bidders relative to the construction of a P E M B grounds building at the Public Works Corporation Yard, and designate eight million, three, or thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of available ARP funds for appropriation as needed to pay those bidders and contractors, and authorize the mayor to execute agreements with each, all as for, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Uh, second.
Any requests for information?
Just wanted to be clear, this is a new, this is, this is supposed to be for a new building. This is supposed to be for a new building for our DPW people, correct?
Correct.
In the, in the yard, to replace the, the, the structure that's currently there. Correct?
It's part of, it's part of a program to centralize all, you know, the staff and the equipment.
In the yard.
Location at Corporation Yard on your own. And it is, it is, uh, it's been, it's been called a metal bar, um, it's, it's a little bit more than just a metal bar. It's gonna house equipment, but it's also to pay office space, uh, plenty of space, uh, with office space, uh, back, et cetera. And so it's, it's both edible space and storage repair space.
Is this the same building that's on the capital plan, or as our mayor called it, the wish list? Um, for four point five million dollars that?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, uh, the reference you made, so I couldn't tell you whether.
The capital plan of the budget, the city budget?
I couldn't, I, I don't know, I don't know based on your description of that, whether it's a private city building or not.
You have the actual budget, right?
Not in front of me.
But in the capital plans of the budget, there was a, a, a DPW building that's listed, um, as a wish list for four point five million dollars. I'm asking, is that?
Well, I know that could be different than your building.
Selective, he builds a dog shelter and says that.
Okay, so, um, does this building has anything, does it have anything to do with the existing DPW building that's in Hyde Park?
All the, all the equipment that was in that building has been moved to Corporation Council, and it needs, it needs to be stored elsewhere. They're, they're overcrowded, and the new steel building at, at, at Corporation Yard will, uh, relieve that overcrowding, and also provide them with office space. As I said, the, the overall program is to centralize all the staff, Department of Public Works, Department of Parks, so that they're all recorded and have office space, et cetera, same location, uh, you, uh, you wrote.
Okay, so I don't know if you, uh, that was really a yes or no question, so I'm gonna ask it again, just, just so you can.
I think it was a yes or no question.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize for disappointing you, but if you have another question.
Uh, one, one, hey, uh, here's the, hold on, hold on, watch this, here's the thing. Uh, first and foremost, you're completely out of order with your facetiousness and, and your pompous arrogant attitude. So at the end of the day, please stay, it, stay, stay in your position, I'm ask, I ask you a simple question. The question is, does this building have anything to do with the existing DPW building that sits in Hyde Park right now? All you had to say was yes or no, you don't have to give me a dissertation of what you think.
I'm not trying to answer.
Okay, so you don't answer questions either, so that's why we need outside legal counsel, God bless you. Keep, keep moving, I'm good. He's, he's showing you, and, and anybody that sit here and continuously sees how he, this is, I'm your colleague. And, and if, if, if it was somebody doing that to any of y'all up here, it, it wouldn't be acceptable. Okay, I, I get it, but at the end of the day, he's out of order. He's out of order. He's out of order.
That's enough.
He's not, he, that should have been enough.
That, that's enough.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't get it. We're doomed, we're doomed.
So, so, so it's, it's, it's listed.
Enough on everybody, that's it.
It's listed as New Road Corporation.
Okay.
All right. Any opposition?
I have a, uh, I don't have opposition, I have a question. So I've, I've toured the, the, the yard and the buildings that are there, and I know there was a plan to consolidate. From my recollection, there's buildings there that were inhabitable and unusable even to store equipment in. So will this replace that building, and will that building be demolished or removed to make way for this?
The director, the director of DPW has to make efforts to, uh, repair buildings when they're, when they're capable of repair. So you'll remember that you guys voted on, uh, to, to install new, very large, uh, big garage doors on a building that is not air tightened. So there are efforts to, uh, save buildings that we have, and they continue to use that, but there are some buildings that are beyond, beyond their, their lifespan.
Right.
And, and that does create space problems. And so this would be a new building to replace, uh, storage that is very, that is very short.
He knows all that, but he doesn't know the wish list.
No. He's not gonna change his answer.
Any other questions? Any opposition?
Yeah, I have an opposition, I have an opposition of the simple fact that, especially when we're talking about this large amount of money, um, we can't get answers, you know, again. And because we can't get answers, you know, at bare minimum, I, I would, I'm voting no, but at bare minimum to table, when we can't get answers, when we as a body of legislative, uh, the legislative branch can't give the simplicity of having a, answers to questions that are very necessary for us to do our job effectively as, you know, governing body, then for us to, we would do our constituents with, are all of you and every taxpaying citizen in the city of Niagara Falls, disjustice, to just vote something just because. And we don't have all of the necessary answers, maybe if those guys were here, they probably could answer, but they don't show up. He doesn't have the answer, we apparently don't have the answers, but, you know, it, it's, it's unfortunate. So, so, yes, and, and we're talking about eight million dollars, and I asked, was it the same building? No one knows, well, hey, was it a part of this wish list, the four point five on there? Because we all had the agenda, you know, and I asked the mayor, that's, the wish list, just so everybody understand, I didn't make up that. I asked the mayor, why, why aren't we talking about specific items? So just so you know, on this actual, our budget, and I said, and he said, oh, those are not a part of our budget. That's a part of what we call a wish list, we just have to find funding for these things. And what was on that wish list was four point five million dollars for a DPW building. So now, I'm like, okay, well, it's a wish list, so we're not gonna even deal, worry about it until the new year, because it's just a wish list, we're not gonna put no ARP funding on that, it's, it's a wish list. And then we get to this last minute, eight, eight million, uh, double up, eight million dollars for, for, for a pole burn. And, and, and then, and so I asked, and all I do is ask a question, is, is this the same of, of, of the four point five million dollars, because we were talking about the park, that's the only reason why I brought it up. And here we are today, you know, um, getting ready to vote on eight million dollars. So, so I, I guess, I, I, and, and yeah, it's ARP funding, but at the end of the. of the day, we, we create such a, 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 a toxic, a toxic governing, a toxic culture of governing, this is toxic, it's very toxic, if we don't, if we, if we're not getting answers, we're not doing our job.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, I, I, well, I, once I'm done, I still have two minutes, thanks to Mr., Mr. DeBoer, um, so with that being the case, why, again, once again, why do we continuously vote on things that we don't have the answers for? Thank you, uh, councilman Zajak, um, because it, 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 it makes sense for us at least to get the information, and I pray that we begin to actually change that level, that culture here as this body, change the culture and say, you know what, we're gonna just stop voting on things because it was just brought to us, and just because money is available for it, we're just gonna vote yes on it because, hey, it's available, so whatever, it doesn't make sense, let's just make sure that we're asking questions, so then we, when we do vote, we can go at home, I, because sometimes I wonder how some of our colleagues actually go to sleep at night, because some of the votes that we vote things through affects a lot of you negative, in a negative manner, and I know if it's for me and my children, I would be, I would be living in these spaces, so all I'm saying is, is yes, for eight million dollars at the bare minimum, now I'll do it, even though I still have a minute left, I, I would like for us to table this item, so I can at least see if it's the same building, because he doesn't know, and I need to see if, and I can reach back out to the administration, they won't give me an answer, I'm sure, but I'll ask them, is this the same four point five million dollar structure of D P W that's on the wish list or the capital plan, that's on our, that we just had meeting, a meeting for, um, for our local budget? So I, so I make a motion to table item, agenda item number six.
So, on the floor, Mr. Miles has made a motion to table item number six, is there a second to table item number six?
So while I agree with the funding, I'll, I'll say that, because we voted on it earlier in the year to do this for the, for, for D P W in the yard, and for me, it's for the workers, and, and that's what I'm thinking about, we need to take care of them, but I give you a second to table it, to see if they respond, to give a, to give a date.
Just one answer, that's all.
Okay, so we have Mr. Miles, motion to table. Okay, Brian seconded it, okay, please call the rules, second to table this item number six.
Item number six, to table motion. Council member Archie.
Yes.
Council member Banks.
We already have to have a meeting to come back, and what you're suggesting is this will be on that meeting, so, yes.
Council member Miles.
Yes.
Council member Zajak.
Unfortunately, even on the actual agenda item, um, I will have to abstain from voting, so I unfortunately would have to abstain from tabling.
Um, question, question, council? Council?
Chairperson.
He seconded a motion that he's abstaining from voting for.
Are you second? No, no, you second.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, okay. Miles, motion is what I have.
Oh, yeah, for this. So, so the original, the original, yeah, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the rule is that, if, if you second a motion that you intend to vote against, so logically, if you can do that under Robert's rules, there's no reason why you second and abstain, that's not Mr. Perry's vote.
All right.
No.
Chairperson Perry.
No.
I have three ayes to table the motion, one abstaining.
The motion is tabled.
And one, no.
Okay, moving on to item number seven. Yeah, have a motion for item number seven.
Yes, item number seven, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order number two for one million, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars to cover the cost of contract administration and con, and construction, inspection services that Troutman Associates will need to provide relative to the construction projects identified in agenda items three through six, and also designate the same dollar amount of available A R P funds for appropriation as needed to pay the A and E firm, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Mayor, second.
Second.
Hey, who said that first? Brian?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Information request?
So, I guess the question would be is, being that we have out of these, we have two of these that are actually tabled, um, would this affect that, or should this item be tabled also as well? Because it's dealing with the dollar amount that would be going towards both the John Duke Center and, uh, the P M B, P E M B grounds building, so if we already had this, did those items already tabled, should we table this item as well? I mean, would that, or would tabling the item, item affect the tabling that we already had?
I, I would say it wouldn't matter in this reason, um, you could, you could vote to approve item seven, however, if, uh, you guys fail to get John Duke approved, uh, we're not gonna pay, um, the hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for, uh, the H G A C approval, so that would, that would not be billed by Troutman Associates, it would be paid, and, so it follows, uh, there's no reason to table it because we tabled the two items.
So, are you gonna make a motion?
No, I, if, if it's not gonna affect, it's on record.
Any other information request? Any opposition? Please call the roll.
Brian, number seven, council member Archie.
Yes.
Council member Banks.
I am in favor of both tabled items, and yes, so therefore, yes on this.
Council member Miles.
Yes.
Council member Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Banks.
Five ayes, motion carried. Uh, item number eight, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, yes, number eight, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a three-year extension agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. that will extend the terms of its standard, of its services to the Niagara Falls Police Department through fiscal years twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, and twenty twenty-nine, and also designate two million, two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents of available A R P funds for appropriation as needed to pay ninety-nine percent of the cost of such extension, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any question?
What happens after that three-year term?
Two possibilities, um, Axon could ask to extend the contract, Axon could choose not to extend the contract, in which case you'd have to find a new vendor, um, I would say those are the two possibilities.
And that funding will come from our general budget.
That is correct, unless there, unless there's, uh, grant money, or some other money, a lot of taxpayer money that becomes available, who knows, you know, three years out, but borrowing, borrowing something that we're seeing would be out of the general problem.
Any other questions? Opposition? Chief Dope?
Brian, number eight, council member Archie.
Yes.
Council member Banks.
Yes.
Council member Miles.
Yes.
Council member Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Five ayes, motion carried. Legislative item number nine, can I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a one-year lease agreement extension with Leaf Capital Funding LLC, the finance leaser for multifunctional copiers supplied to the city by Brian Parisi Copier System, Inc., all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I have a second, please. Second. May I have, uh, any information request? Opposition? Please call the roll.
Brian, number nine, council member Archie.
Yes.
Council member Banks.
Yes.
Council member Miles.
Yes.
Council member Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Five ayes, motion carried. Item number ten, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for item number ten, I move the council vote to approve an extension to the city's dog control boarding is, boarding and services agreement with the Pitchak, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the amended document that is attached to his recommendation memo dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
You have a second?
Uh, second.
Information request?
Mr. Chairperson. I have, I have to make a motion, the second, I'd like to make a motion to have a brief executive session with the council and our legal counsel.
Do you have a second?
It's a motion to recess.
Recess.
Consult with legal counsel, it's not, it's not a motion for executive session.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for recess with legal counsel.
And typically, uh, in the past, uh, Mr. Chairperson, you, you said, uh, you pick a fine, probably arbitrarily, but as to whether we back, I would not recommend that because I don't know what questions, uh, you have or how well taken answer, like say, a motion should be considered one to recess, uh, to take legal counsel and, uh, you know, a motion will, the, the immediately, uh, resume as soon as that's finished.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Okay. So we have a fifty-minute recess, we have a fifty-minute recess.
Do we gotta vote? We gotta vote.
We gotta vote.
To recess?
Vote to recess.
Vote to recess.
This vote is to recess for item number ten.
Okay.
Council member Archie.
Yes.
Council member Banks.
Yes.
Council member Miles.
Yes.
Council member Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, five ayes, recess. Okay, five days recess.
Okay, we will resume meeting with item, resolution item number ten. With that, I will ask to move item number ten with a motion please.
I did that, we did that, didn't we?
Make a motion for item ten?
Yeah.
We did that.
Yeah, great.
Okay, then we'll give a second.
We did that.
Give us a second. And information? Did it? Okay. Oppositions? Um, someone else speak on that. So right now, again, on record, um, I personally found out that our shelter at this present moment is at capacity. Dante, how did you know that? Because I got a text and a post of five dogs that were loose, uh, certain portion of the city in two, that were wandering and weaving in between traffic on Porter Road where our babies went to high school. And so, instead of me just taking anybody's word, I went ahead and I called our non-emergency line, and I asked them, I said, hey, um, there's seven dogs, basically, right now, that are loose in the city of Niagara Falls, and I told them about Porter, Porter Road, and I told them about the other five, and the, uh, this guy said that, well, the shelter right now is only taking dogs that are injured or possibly hit by a car. I said, so they're not taking our strays and our, our surrendered dogs? They said, no, because right now they're at capacity, and they made it clear that they're often at capacity as well. And so, um, this whole idea of us not having a place for our dogs if this contract doesn't go through, um, becomes to me personally very null and void, because the fact is, there are seven dogs right now that don't have a place to go, because our municipal shelter that we're paying twenty thousand dollars a month for will not take those dogs because they are what, at capacity? So, and then, you know, the idea of this timeframe, and there's only one, uh, animal control officer that can take, um, our dogs during a certain amount, during a certain period of time during the day, and I'm trying to say this. Now we get in motion. My dog, my dog, he ran late, and it come. And it was at like ten, it was late, I'm out, because he was out there scouting, trying to find it, and one of the random officers actually, they, my dog, uh, to the S C C, hey, this, that's why they have a key, so they were going to drop it off, I couldn't get him that night, you know, but I picked him up the next morning, it was fine. So there's some idea that it's weird on a pay, same amount of money, twenty thousand dollars, uh, money for, uh, a client, he could only take, what, twenty dogs? Seventeen, seventeen to twenty, let's give him that, that's still less than half of what she signed up for, so for me personally, she's breached the contract. Couple of weeks ago, I actually mentioned that I, I actually reached out to the mayor and the administration, and I asked them, where are we in the R F P contract, where are we, where are we with the R F P? Because we already know that this, this contract is due to expire December twenty-first, this is October twenty-ninth. I, it's more than this advance, though, it's what, what we're a handful of days away, October twenty-ninth, and they never gave me a response, because I feel like they already had it in their mind that they were going to put this young lady in business here. So in the event that, guess what, if we do, if we, if we vote this in, if anything can happen that can, you know, stop this building from being built, aside from the fact of, you know, carpet, carpet, um, it ain't, it ain't a law, um, anything can, so, so guess what, we vote this through, she can be here for another year, year and a half, and there's nothing we can really do about it. Not nothing we can do about it, but it will be nothing that I, the council would do anything about, you know what I'm saying, if we're willing to push this through right now. This is unfortunate, I, um, I, I don't want to, uh, it's really tough, it's really tough. Um, we don't have anywhere for our dogs to go now, is what I'm saying. So the whole idea of that, we're, oh my God, if we don't vote, we'll let X amount of here at the end of the month, we're not going to have any place for our dogs, we don't have anywhere for them now. Why haven't we reached out, as a municipal space, to try to find something that would actually cover the dogs that we have, or that we can't take now, and find out, you know, who's best suited to actually run it at this present time?
How about emergency?
So, at the end of the day, um, I think it would make the most sense, I would, you know, bare minimum, table, but honestly, for the lack of any type of, like I may have mentioned before, no documentation, there has been nothing that she had brought here to show us that, you know, um, hey, all the allegations and the, the Bible worth of allegations that we all have up here, um, she hasn't brought anything to the, to us, to her employers, we, not just us, we voted it, but guess what, you all employers, your tax dollars, the twenty thousand dollars a month that we paid, that comes from every last one of us, so with that being the case, at the bare minimum, um, she, I, I would think that she would have brought something to refute and give us some evidence, but what happens, I feel like we always get the little favors when it comes down to that. We don't care about, like, so, so, I, I, I feel like a reason to divorce him.
Emergency.
We don't have, yeah, that's how we gave her this contract, because that's how we did, that's how we did, we gave her, it was an emergency.
Do it again.
So, in the same realm, the same hand, just wondering, you know, how, how, we felt that, you know, it was an emergency, we did what we had to do, um, do the same diligence that the mayor said that he did when he found the pit check, let's find somebody else that's actually able to handle our dogs. So, so I oppose this whole argument, um, we don't have, it's, 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 and no one's asking questions, everybody's getting mad at the people that come over, come, come to the podium and speak, but the truth of it is, is how many people are actually saying, you know what, they're saying something, maybe I don't like their delivery, maybe I don't like how they're saying it, but let me at least find out if it's true. Everybody getting on the internet, newspaper articles, oh, people making, you know, smug, smurfy remarks about all the dogs and the people acting as a circus and all this other stuff, but at the end of the day, how many of us actually really, none of us don't even know how many dogs she got today. No one has a clue, but we're making the final decision, so my thing is, is like, she don't care, apparently, they don't care, I'm hoping, you know, this is my, this is almost like a, a, a long range, this is like, you know, a hell way to throw, I'm hoping that at the bare minimum, that a, a majority of us would actually take her into consideration and not grasp at straw to try to find a reason to give her, extend this contract to her when she has not proven to us, she has not proven to us, as her employers, if you manage a place, if you were someone's employer and they weren't fully operating as what you said that they were, that they signed up to operate, when you go for that evaluation and say, hey, okay, what have you done for the past half a year, however many months, that's in any job, we all work somewhere, I'm quite sure, you have an evaluation, and if you're not operating up the snuff, you possibly might either get a, get fired, or they might put you on probation or whatever the case is, none of that has happened, and all it is, is that we're actually, hey, congratulations, we'll give you another year, that's not something that I think is proper good governing, so let's just make sure before we vote. I know people may have their own ideas or their own, think about, think about these dogs, think about the dogs that right now we can't even put anywhere.
The three quarters of a mile.
So, that's my, that's my opposition, i- 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 and yes, it is, it does become personal because I lost time, you know what I'm saying, and there's other people, and, and my dogs got hit, right in front of Como, God bless those owners of Como that took care of my dog when I came to pick him up, but at the end of the day, are we got to do, we got to wait for another dog to get hit, another dog to get injured, another dog to get injured. another dog to get injured, another dog to possibly be killed? Or a dog that's actually, let's, let's, the next one.
I think your time is up.
Okay, or our dog bites one of our children.
I think your time is expired.
Of course, because you don't die. Go ahead, I'm not anymore.
Is there any other call?
Call, see, it's up here. Table, table.
Okay, call the roll.
For item number 10, Councilmember Archie?
No.
Councilmember Bax?
There's issues with this, um, all the way around. And there's processes, look, I, there's processes that are broken, things that need to be worked on. Um, somebody said, "Can we do better?" The answer is yes, um, for sure, uh, many things. I heard the, the cost outweighed the issue. And, you know, no, today's solutions are not going to address tomorrow's problems because tomorrow's problems are going to change. We got to continually think about how we're going to handle this, you know, this issue of, of dogs in our city. Um, we've heard for, I've heard for, uh, probably over a year now that we need an R F P. And we've, are addressing that in, with the new dog shelter. Um, we ask for that to be put in, and it is. We have thirteen days and what, the dogs that we have could be released and, and back into the streets. Look, I've rescued a dog from the streets that was skin and bones, still have it. Some sitting out here have seen me with my dog. And I can't take the risk of putting more dogs on the street in thirteen days with no catch-all. So I will go for the contract extension so we can get the R F P, get our dog shelter, and move forward. There's no guarantees. I can't do anything. You can take them today, but I can't do anything without a guarantee. I cannot put more dogs on the streets. I rescued a dog from the street. So, my vote is yes.
That's crap because we take them for free.
I know, I know, and thank you for that.
We'll take the thirteen dogs for free. So stop going yet.
Councilmember Miles?
So.
For free.
It was so crazy. I told, I told her 29th. I know, I know, I know, I know one more point. October 29th, I reached out to the mayor and his administration. And I asked them, "Where are we on, with the R F P?" October 29th, I said, "We're leaning towards the actual expiration of our dog sheltering services." Sir, Mr. Tony Resigno, Mr. Robert Resigno, I think he was in the wrong. You know, where are we with the R F P? And I got zero response. And here we are, what is it, the 18th of December? All it is, is showing me, it's showing me what's, what, what, what's been, what's happened, what's taken place. It becomes this level of nepotism. It becomes this level of, I don't know who's sleeping with who. I don't know what to do with this. Excuse, excuse my, excuse my, or, I apologize for my being out of order. You can scratch that off the record. All I'm saying is, is this, overall, these, right now, if we were, if our administration was really worried about where our dogs were going to be, one, uh, December 31st of 2020, three, we would have had an R F P. If, if we was truly, if they really cared, don't be pseudo concerned about these dogs now, because it's not. It's, because at the end of the day, we're fighting, I've been fighting at this, at this digest all year long for a full year on behalf of these dogs. I don't want nobody to sit up here and try to take, take, take credit as if you really care now. Because it's over a year, I've been asking, what about an R F P? What about looking for another vendor? Or what about just the competitive bidding process? So guess what? Give her the, the emergency contact in September, and then in December, hey, let's start a new year. Good, no, we extended her services, and I don't want to hear it was, about, you know, us extending services on copiers and prisoners, they're not dogs, they're not living creatures. So at the end of the day, we didn't stop, we, we did it wrong, so we did it again. So we gave her, oh, okay, so we're not going to give it from September to December. We're going to give it from September to December of the whole next year. And then we're going to wait that whole year and wait till the very last minute, at the very last meeting of the ci, at, at, at City Hall. And then we're going to push this down and make runs out. And then we're going to create another emergency. Let's get the gasoline and the matches, and let's create another fire for us to put out. Unfortunately, um, that's where we are. I vote no for this contract.
Councilmember Zajak?
All on you.
I was partially hoping there was going to be a motion to table, because I was definitely in favor of that again. As I, as I spoke it several times to Councilmember Miles about this prior to the meeting. Um, very healthy conversation, as always. Um, got to reach out and sign on it. This isn't a, it's not an easy answer. And I shared that with all of my colleagues, and I shared that with them today.
It's so hard.
No, it's so hard.
It's so hard.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Um, you know, I can appreciate the not wanting the however many dogs released back into the city, and I understand that aspect of it. And the flip side is, you know, we've heard several times at the D A S and we've heard, uh, several times at the podium that we got in a situation because of an emergency. I don't, I don't think the proper way of doing business would be to get in another emergency. So, so, I guess, I, I guess I share a level of upsetness with my colleagues. That's not a great word, but a level of confusion and whatever word may be, um, about, you know, this being brought to us at twelve thousand. There's thirteen days left. We have a special meeting coming up, correct? We had the headline?
Correct.
For, for no other reason other than to possibly have this item or an amended version of this item come up at the special meeting, I'm going to vote no.
Chairperson Perry?
I vote yes.
Two yeas and three nays.
Yes, number 11. I move the council vote to approve the contract award for R F, R F P number NF P D 2024-17. Wait, did I read this? To Western New York Radio Services for the provision of onsite radio services relative to the city's public safety radio systems and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with said vendor as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request? Opposition?
Item number 11, Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles? Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Item.
Five days, motion carried. Number 12, I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve the designation of one hundred thousand dollars from available casino funds for appropriation to the Niagara Falls Urban Renewal Agency for the limited purposes outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request? Opposition? Have a call roll.
Item number 12, Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion carried. Item number 13, I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an agreement between the Seneca Nation and the city whereby the city will provide certain specified policing services on the property of the nation's gaming facility located in Niagara Falls. And in return, the nation will reimburse the city for all its actual costs incurred as a result of providing such services, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request? Opposition?
Yeah, I, I, um, I get being reimbursed for services, but I'm thinking about, um, we already have an overstressed and overworked department. Um, and we're having issues hiring, which, which equates to forced overtime, being mandated in. And I can't see leveraging public safety just because we're getting, somebody's going to take care of the bill for us. Were our hiring up in it a little bit different? I, I think I would be more on board with it. Um, I feel like they have to patrol the area anyway. To my understanding, these folks will be inside, which still, you know? So I would vote, I would vote no on this.
To piggyback off of what Mr. Councilman Archie said, um, you know, I've heard from many police officers who have had their sixty, twenty hour shifts, uh, you know, and put in a lot of overtime force, um, to add this as, uh, a burden, you know, to, uh, our local P Ds. Not like, you know, all they're known as pay for the time. It's not like this whole thing gives our police officers a special raise, something, you know, uh, huge incentive to say, you know what, I'll put in that extra time. It's just, hey, we need, we want to utilize your police officers in our space. And for already stressed workforce within our police department, I don't think it would be, it wouldn't be who was to even put another level of stress in, uh, for them to have to maintain, uh, that space. So, uh, I'd be voting no on this.
I shared the same concern immediately off the bat with the, our overworked, overstressed, um, patrol unit and the, the hours that, uh, they're out there. And, uh, you know, common sense says that this could also be this, you know, those same hours over the weekend. And, uh, so my first question, and, and Tom, I want to be sure I'm understanding correctly because that was a concern, I experienced it. Uh, it, it's my understanding that patrol units are, a, a person from patrol unit is not where this is leading towards. It is coming from another department or badge department.
That is, that is correct. That is my understanding from the superintendent of police who favors supporting this, uh, this item. And, uh, the, the study goes preference is for, uh, non-uniformed officers such as detective.
Detective, okay.
So what that means in terms of the concern about patrol officers, whether they're going to be stressed out, that they will have no additional stress. I would argue that they actually have less stress. Reason being is that, um, when, when incident occurs now at the casino, who gets called? It's one of the beat patrol cars from one of the communities. And if the downtown beat cop is busy with, let's say, uh, sobriety checkpoint or D W Y arrest, and they're tied up, then an officer from one of the other, other communities, like Eliseau or the North End, has to be called down to, to the casino to respond to that. And that it's not just, uh, it's not just possibly making arrests in the casino, it's also going back to the precinct and doing a lot of paperwork. So that's kind of that, that beat officer, that patrol officer is off the road because something happened at the casino. And the reason why this is being promoted and, and recommended by the superintendent and the mayor is that, um, the expectation is that when incidents occur at the casino, um, detectives will handle it. And when they handle it, they won't be distracting, uh, beat officers. And moreover, those detectives will be paid for by the Seneca Nation rather than the taxpayer. So it seems like a win-win.
So, so the one thing I will say is, is I like that direction. And when I learned it was, it was not impacting the patrol office the way I even originally, uh, read this and thought it would. My only, uh, thing I would say to this is if it does start to impact and go maybe in a direction we didn't think it would, I would like for it to be revisited, that's all.
Anybody else? Is there, is there a, um, is there a clause within the contract that says that if it does get, uh, overbearing, even with the detective? Because at that point, the detectives will have to basically be in, in the facility. It's not like, right now, they can get a call and our police can respond to it. But now we're talking about having, you know, multiple detectives inside of their space and not utilized in our streets. Um, that takes away from, and, and maybe I'm asking a question then. Does that take away from it? Like, you know, the detective that will be utilized in a situation that may occur within the city? If they're stuck there, they have, they have to stay there?
No, there's, there's not going to be a reduction in the number of detectives who are normally assigned to the city. What there will be is they will make arrangements in terms of staffing to find detectives who, without this, without drawing down from available resources from the rest of the city, will be assigned to, uh, casino.
Item number 13, Councilmember Archie?
No.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three yeas, two nays.
Motion carried. Going on to item number 14. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, number 14. I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a right-of-entry and access agreement between the city and R J Niagara LLC relative to the latter's development plans to restore the apartment building located at 410 10th Street, which the city still owns pending the completion of its sale to the said LLC. All is more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated December 11th, 2024.
May I have a second, please?
I have 401.
Oh, did I say, I'm sorry. Did I mix those numbers up? I will restate the address as 410, 401, excuse me, 401 10th Street.
Yeah.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request? Any opposition? Have a call roll.
Item number 14, Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number fifteen, may I have a motion please?
After you read it.
Okay. Nope, let me, let me read it first. Uh, I move the council vote to approve res- resolution relative to mending chapter one seven one of the codified ordinances entitled Benefits of Employees Not Covered by Collective Bargaining Agreements.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request?
Yeah, was there a modification to the language?
Modification?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion postpone.
Postpone? Motion on the floor to postpone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, yeah.
So we have a motion to postpone by David Lee Nick and a second to postpone by Mr. Miles.
Item fifteen for postponement. Councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days to postpone.
Five days.
Item fifteen.
Item number fifteen, postpone. Moving on to resolution number sixteen, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to scheduling a public hearing before the city council concerning the proposed adoption of a local law amending the official zoning map, Schedule Eight of Chapter thirteen zero eight of the Codified Ordinances, to rezone four twenty-six Fourth Street from R three C multifamily to D one dash B Downtown Transition.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Information request? Any opposition? Any votes?
Item number sixteen, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Moving on to item number seventeen, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to scheduling a public hearing before the city council concerning the proposed abandonment of a proportion of South Eighty-Eight Street north of Cuba Creek.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Information request? Any opposition? W.
Item number seventeen, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number eighteen, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the reappointment of John Sapinski to the Zoning Appeals Board.
Do I have a second please?
Yes, second.
Any information request? Opposition?
Item number eighteen, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number nineteen, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the appointment of Commissioner Deeds in the city of Niagara Falls, New York.
May I have a second please? Any information request? Opposition?
For number, item nineteen, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number twenty, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program application submitted by the Niagara County Center for Economic Development to support the redevelopment of five nineteen Cuba Drive, Niagara Falls, New York.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any, any information requests?
May I ask a question?
Yeah? Any opposition? Okay, vote call.
Item number twenty, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number twenty-one, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the submission of an application to the Empire State Development for financial assistance under the Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Program to support the demolition of a parking ramp located at six twenty Tenth Street to facilitate future development.
May I have a second?
Second.
Information request?
Basically, we're tearing down the whole parking lot, and we're going to have just a flat space of parking. So it's...
But I understand this is just one stuffed, uh, longage stuffed props.
We can't hear you.
It might mess up.
The, the hospital is, is pushing this because the building, the ramp has reached the extent of its useful lifespan. Uh, it has structural issues, they know that, uh, it needs to come down. This, this money will merely, although there's a lot of money involved, will merely cover, uh, across the demolition. And my understanding is that the, the short-term plan is to replace the ramp with, uh, street-level parking. Whether the hospital can gather funding, uh, to change that street-level parking lot into something, uh, multi-level is a complete unknown. We, we just don't know what will happen in the future. And it's really a matter for the hospital to figure out on their own. But I think for us, essentially to, to help facilitate, uh, this grant money, uh, for the hospital's project that they know they need to tackle.
Is, is, is the question, uh, follow-up question is, in the condition that the rent is in right now, is it actually considered a safety hazard?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it just, are, we consider it just...
Safety issue.
I, I heard that, that it's at risk of being condemned if it hasn't done already. And it is a, a safety issue. And I'm sure that, um, they, the hospital will, will be working on a long-range plan, um, you know, beyond the, the service-level parking lot. We just don't know how soon, uh, the hospital will be able to, um, pursue a, a long-range plan.
I'll just add, there's no parking past level three, and the doctor's offices that are in there, if they're not moved already, they'll be moving in the next couple of weeks, because they can't sustain any weight past, like, the third floor.
That, that's gonna be the next question, so.
Any opposition? Any votes?
Item twenty-one, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Resolution number twenty-two, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the council's support for proposed Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad scenic byway.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Any, uh, any information request?
Any opposition?
Yes.
Were all, excuse me, Tom, were all council members added? Or, because I read the resolution, I thought all council members, but no?
At the moment, the item is, uh, Archie and Perry, and, uh, Mr. Zajak and Mr. Miles have asked you to add it.
Okay. I mis- I misunderstood, so please, yeah, I misunderstood.
Anything else? Any opposition?
Item number twenty-two, councilmember Archie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, motion Perry. Item number twenty-three, may I have a motion please?
What's twenty-three?
What's twenty-three?
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 I have twenty-two, I don't...
No, twenty-two.
Is there a twenty-three?
Oh, yeah, I see it here, I don't have it.
Yeah, I'm supporting that, if they were to report it back, so, so if you, if you look at, um...
I guess my back here.
Oh, someone picked it today?
Yeah, the last thing I got is twenty-two.
Twenty-one? Last I have is twenty-two.
Yeah, me too.
Relative to the, uh, appointment of, of shared services.
Yeah, don't have it.
I don't have it.
And if it's, yeah. It's not in there.
Can add it to the next meeting.
Go to item thirteen.
Here, here.
There should be two pages provided.
I thought this just went together.
From the second page.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a little awkward, um, because the, the first request was just the mayor's, and one of the things that the Seneca Nation has indicated in negotiations on, um, the contract, let's say, like, to have, uh, exhibit A and exhibit B attached to the final contract, exhibit A is gonna be, um, the, the council, the Seneca Nation's, uh, resolution approving the contract. And, um, the second exhibit B will be this resolution, uh, by the council approving the contract. And so, because it's a resolution, um, when I, when I emailed you guys, um, with the corrected packet, I P D F, uh, Q so more, um, it wasn't, it was included, it is included. Also, the materials that were uploaded, uh, through council letter, uh, item twenty-three. It is the same resolution that, that you'll find attached to item thirteen. It's just reprinted, and there's, and there's a, a row of their names at the bottom that two reports about, that's the only others.
Yeah.
I didn't realize. I, I can, I can make the motion, are, are we ready? Okay. Good?
It's, yeah, but I'm not, because I, I'll re-encode it now, but whatever. Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
I see it, I would...
Will they read it out loud for you?
We, we probably should, because it wasn't...
I'm sorry, Mike. What's the question?
I'm good.
We're just waiting for everybody to...
I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to read it, and I didn't realize the two went together.
And you said it's uploaded with the other stuff on the website?
Yes.
Just wait for everybody to read it, that's all.
Okay, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the city council approving a shared services agreement with the Seneca Nation of Indians and confirming its authorization of the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
May I have a second for motion please?
Second.
All right, any, uh, questions regarding the chair of the resolution? Shared Services Resolution. Any opposition to that?
This person don't make a vote.
Item twenty-three. Councilmember Archie.
Um, no.
No? Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
No.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Three A's.
Three A's, motion Perry. Now we're moving on to the, uh, public speakers. As per the adoption of the council protocol, the original public committee speaker, Jeff, uh, I'm sorry, speaker, uh, any items, uh, please be advised that the, uh, uh, key protocol, um, you know, there's no, there's no, 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 profanity. And with that, uh, that's the call, first person.
For the good of the community, the first person who'd like to speak is Emily Walker. Good evening again. Um, I'm here at my club, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, behind me, I'd like to say thank you for listening to our concerns regarding stray dog, uh, sheltering and management within the city. It's wonderful this evening. Um, I have a unique perspective as I involve an employee of the Niagara SPCA, and I am also a taxpayer of the city of Niagara Falls. Um, I see large amounts of money being thrown to a vendor who can't provide what the city needs. You now have the responsibility to find a vendor who can provide what the city needs. Currently, there's no overflow plan for the number of strays, um, that the city is responsible for. It's very clear that seventeen kettles is not nearly enough. There needs to be a plan in place, whether continuing with the current vendor or finding an alternate vendor, that there is enough kettle space to satisfy the need within the city. Ignoring the stray dog issue in the city is a public safety issue. Stray dogs are scary, they're disoriented. Many of them become aggressive in that situation. They can pose a threat to residents and their own pets. I have dogs. When I know there are stray dogs in my neighborhood and there have been, I'm afraid to take my own dogs outside, leashed, controlled, because I don't know what's in my neighborhood. Residents should not be asked to hold dogs with unknown history, unknown vaccination status. It's dangerous to put this responsibility on residents. It is a city responsibility. The current situation of having only one officer who responds to stray dog calls is completely irresponsible. Any officer can and should be able to respond to those calls. Imagine if any other kinds of complaints were handled that way. Hi, there's a strange person in my yard, they keep shouting at me, I told them to leave and they won't. I'm afraid to leave my house. Can you send an officer? I'm sorry, the officer who handles those calls is off for the weekend. You'll have to call back Monday. Or you can keep that person in your yard. But really, they're in your yard, so now they're kind of part of your family, so... That would be completely unacceptable for any other situation. So why is it okay for stray dogs? I also see a duplication of services. The SPCA is a law enforcement agency specifically responsible for investigating animal cruelty. Why was the city chosen to take on that role, knowing that you can't afford it and you can't house those dogs? The result of the current situation? Your DCO looks the other way as animals are abused and neglected while those on the Niagara County Animal Abuse Registry continue to harbor animals? While residents make repeat calls about neglect, all because you don't have the space you need to house animals? This problem cannot wait for your new shelter to be built a year from now. Dogs are in your streets now. Dogs are being neglected and abused now. This is your chance to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Barone.
As Emily just mentioned, you all have a chance to do things the right way this time. We all know that it wasn't an emergency last year, it is an emergency now. I'm very happy and relieved that you voted, some of you voted the right way this evening. But I'm sure you're all questioning, where do we go from here? There are other alternatives until we have our shelter built, which we know that we can't change that now because that process is already moving forward unfortunately in our park. But we can change and do the right thing now. As far as what I had said earlier about the animal control issues, that's what brought me here to begin with. It's very disheartening because I've worked with the previous animal control officer while he was, before he retired, and then with this animal control officer too. I know where things started to go awry and go wrong. And it's unfortunate that him and I don't have that type of relationship anymore. All that needed to be said was, I'm wrong, I screwed up, let's start over. Instead, he avoided me, wrote things online, was very unprofessional, and lied straight to me. I even asked for a private meeting with him and he said, sure, I'll meet with you at the police station. Couldn't even, I just asked for a simple phone call so we could, you know, iron out the things that I was upset about and that he could explain to me why he lied. But instead, I felt like that was an intimidation tactic, but of course, I was willing to go. I got hurt that morning, half an hour before I was set to go there and I ended up in urgent care. So I apologized and couldn't make it, but I wanted to reschedule. He eventually rescheduled with me, but then canceled on me the morning of. And then I just gave up, but that's not how things should go. And unfortunately, we still are going to have animal control issues unless, and I'm praying that maybe our people, our good people at the SPCA can kind of come back into the city welcomed with open arms to help us combat the problem of all of these animals running amok in the streets. It will definitely help the residents who are in panic mode all the time and not knowing return, what to do. And I know that our animals will be treated with the utmost care and love when they are in the hands of, hopefully, someone that really cares about them and wants to see them get adopted, who will advertise and will open their doors to the public to come in and pick out a new companion that hasn't been claimed. That's my hopes. I'm hopeful God has answered our prayers this evening. Now, the hard work will be to iron out who will be taking that responsibility. And I am just, I'm glad that some of you have listened this past year, I don't feel like coming to the podium and all of the things that we've been through all together. I don't have any hard feelings. We're here to advocate, we're here for people to hopefully listen to us as taxpayers, but also animal lovers, and I appreciate all of you. I know it's been rough, but hopefully we can do a good job moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vincent Colley.
Oh, skip, okay, thank you.
Janice Gallo is the next speaker. I'm sorry. Oh, Janine, sorry, Janine.
All right. I'd like to start off with at least thanking you for one year of finally maybe listening a little, I appreciate it so much. There's something I just want to clear up and maybe you don't know. When any, let's not even say the name of the place, but your shelter has a five-day hold. After the five days, those dogs become rescue buffalo dogs. So from, to say thirteen dogs would be released, that would be only if they were in the last five days thirteen dogs were picked up. You know it's been full for a month, so there's really zero dogs in there because they're all rescue buffalo dogs. So I just want to clarify, if her contract ends December thirty-first, December twenty-sixth to December to January first are the only dogs that could be transferred over. And it has to be documentation of those were the five dogs that were picked up in those last five days. Just as when it was an emergency from the SPCA, she was only transferred over, I think, two dogs. The other sixty stood at the SPCA because the hold was over, they became theirs. So let's clarify that, just so you know, when you do talk, that you understand that it's only the last five days of when her contract expires. And as far as an emergency, you are correct, you don't need an emergency. It expires, you start a new one. Even if it's temporary, want to change the word, whatever it is, you had a presentation. You may not like me, but I know you like Nicole. How could you not like Nicole? Okay, she gave you a presentation, we now have, we are stronger, she is stronger than ever as far as support, and to make a difference in Niagara County and especially Niagara Falls dog situation. You'd have so much more service for so less you can put, like you could do another police officer, you don't have any of that responsibility. You have cruelty to animals taken care of, you have court dogs taken care of, and you have stray dogs and lost dogs all taken care of in one nice package. You have a contractor, you're putting this money, and again, I asked before this, if that four point one million dollars couldn't be a dog shelter, could you do something else with it? And the answer is yes. So it's not lost money, you voted yes on it, there it is in the bank, you got it. When you find out or you realize it would cost you three times the amount of money to run a dog shelter, no matter who runs it. Let's just pretend you built this building in a park and you can. Why would you pay three times the amount of money you would have to to make it somebody else's responsibility? You don't have to worry about your police running around taking things off. You'd have twenty-four seven access to put a code in and take that stray dog somewhere not in the park. You could have your fireworks. The community would be happy that the dog situation was taken care of, let alone, guess what? Paws in the Falls does cats for free, for free. So you'd have catching and release pro, you know, things, that's all we'd get grant money for. You'd have, you know, there's this dead cat, there's dead cats everywhere. It would be, you know, we have another town asking, actually willing to pay to stop the feral cat thing before it gets out of control. When I came up to this podium, we had thirteen thousand more cats than people. Today, you have over fifteen thousand more cats than people. And another year, if I do my math, we'll have seventeen thousand more cats than people. Okay, so let's just stop the bleeding of everything. You have somebody that came up to the podium the third time. You have in a special meeting, the special meeting, again, you can word it every way you want, you can't, all five of you sit in a meeting and say, we don't have another alternative, or we have to wait three more months to do an RFP. You know that's just guiding along what the alternative of what they want it to be. If she has zero that she could do now, she's going to have zero eight days from now. It's always gonna, there's no room. Take the help, take the help and thank you for your, for please.
The next speaker is Anna Grabowski.
Hello again, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for listening to our concerns about the dog shelter and our testimonies about our concerns. Thank you, much appreciated. The DCO problem, he works only days. I was out a couple weeks ago in the middle of the night and there was a dog just running loose. Couldn't find an officer anywhere, so I went to the Memorial Hospital, that's where they were. And he said, sorry, can't do anything, we're trying to work out that problem. Well, with all the funding that we have, why not cross-train other officers to do the job of DCO? Why not educate them with all the extra money that we have? In the military, in the army, we have this thing called additional duty and cross-training, which is very, very smart. Because we're learning another skill that we can help our fellow team with. We're not stuck in just one, one thing, one area of expertise. So that maybe would be another avenue of approach with the DCL, cross-train, hire a couple more officers so that these dogs, they can have a fighting chance in the middle of the night when we can have another officer on duty to help with that. Does that, I think that makes logical sense. I mean, it made sense in the army, so I think it makes sense in the civilian world too. Also, with the, with the shelter, or excuse me, with the DPW building in the High Park, I would like to, I know it was voted on, I would like to propose that the building be used and constructed for something that fits more with the theme of the area, such as a recreational building. We had the YMCA, that was, it was great until it wasn't. And it would be a nice family area, indoors, recreation, recreation center. It goes in with the theme of everything else that's in the area. Dog shelter does not. And we need some feasibility study anyway. We need transparency, a list of expenditures, expenses, a business proposal. It's just a little bit odd to me that it was voted on at the last minute. It was known about all year, now that we're at the last minute, we're going to vote to use that as a proposed dog shelter. Also, we the people need more transparency in our local government. We did not have any of the memos for today's meeting. How are we going to be informed to speak on anything if we don't have the mayor's menu, or memo, I'm sorry? That doesn't make any sense. It also doesn't make any sense that we, the people, get the information a day prior. And you all get the information Friday before the council meeting, I think? We should have the information a lot sooner so we can all do our due diligence and research what is really going on. I don't want to take anybody's word for what's going on, I want to do my own research and actually figure out what's going on. The last thing I want to speak of is misuse of appointed position and power. Why is the member, the mayor never at the council meeting? I understand, it's the charter. We need to revise the charter. Out of respect for his people of Niagara Falls, he should be here, whether it's in the charter or not. The mayor, in my opinion, is misusing his position as well as governmental time to target people and for his, by his weekly address. Also targeting, targeting a business and of our with the information that's in the lobby over here. That should be taken down.
I agree.
That's misuse of government property, government time, government electricity. And people need to make their own decision and research for themselves, not have it out there for, from the mayor's perspective. Thank you, and I guess we'll see you next year. Do the right thing, be better, be better. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nicole Dyer. Dyer, Dyer, sorry.
I don't even know where to begin, other than to say thank you for voting against your current vector. Like I said, we've been coming here for a year and stating our concerns about the dogs that are running in the streets of Niagara Falls. And I want to thank you for thinking of them and wanting to give them a better opportunity. I would like to address backs, if I may. Just, you were wondering as to how and where you would go with these dogs. I gave you a presentation, and I elaborated that, yes, we are ready. We are ready immediately. So I want to take that fear away, that you feel that you don't have a place for your animals. You do. We've been approved by New York State Ags and Market. We are an approved shelter. We've gone through all of the rigorous requirements that New York State has, has mandated. Even up to the upcoming December 15th, 2025 regulations were sent. We don't have to worry about, what are we going to do? How are we going to do this? It, it's done. And I, I want you guys to understand that if you decide that we are your chosen person, I'm your chosen person to take on these animals, know that I would do everything in my power to make sure that these animals of Niagara Falls find a safe place to lay their heads, to make sure that they are fully adopted. I will utilize my resources, my partnerships that I've already created within Niagara Falls and Niagara County. So I want you guys to think that there, there's not, there's not going to be an issue. Again, I want to thank you guys so much for voting the way that you did, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ken Hamilton.
Ken Hamilton. It's been 43 years that I've been addressing city councils. And I remember going way back to when I first got involved with Fred Brown and others, Catherine Galopin, so many other people that have helped me to further understand the issues that we face and how to address those issues and to come to good outcomes. Early on, one of the reasons, one of the things, and I liked seeing you guys doing that this time, taking that break, going to the committee of the whole room and hashing out these issues. All of those years ago, that happened the day before the council meeting, that the committee of the whole got together and they went over the paperwork that they had got on resolutions, and they discussed those issues so that when they came out to the legislative session the following day, is that they were better prepared to meet the questions and give the answers to the people in the audience who needed to know and understand what was going on. We have so many better mechanisms for that now than what we had in the past. For instance, it was brought out that we had something, walk-ons, et cetera, that was not in the hands of the citizens, but could have been projected on these screens so that it could be read along. There's just so many things that we can do. But again, when we start to talk about the founders of this great nation of ours, they said, "Government must be slow and deliberate." Slow, which means you take your time to make sure you're getting it right. Deliberate is the deliberation that you have on there where you've actually looked at every one of the elements that was necessary. And whatever you're going to do to make sure that you understand the long-term ramifications of what you're about to do, how it impacts everyone else. I ran in 1996 for the New York State Senate. That's the one thing that the Buffalo News personally said about me is that Ken Hamilton understands the long-term ramifications of public policy. And when we start to look at the Indians of the plains, the Sioux Indians, the Blackfeet out in the South Dakota area, one of the things that they have said, and many of the tribes, is that we don't pass any rules, change any cultures, unless we understand how it impacts the seventh generation. I would strongly urge you to go back to the foundations the basic way that the city council was watching it. And that above all, you need yourself a legislative assistant. You need yourself someone sitting up there in your office that is marshalling the information that you really need so that you guys could go on pretty much with the life that you have with your family and have everything, someone looking up all of this, someone answering the phone, someone writing the letters and putting together a package in which would aid you in doing your job. I have to go back to Mayor Palillo and Attorney Bartolome. Jake comes up to me one time in the back. He comes up to me and he says, "Kenny," he says, and Bartolome was there, I was there. He says, "Kenny," I go up to Bartolome. Bartolome was the attorney who always found where the money was in Niagara Falls and took it with him. He was a great attorney for his causes. And Jake said to me, he says, "Kenny, I told Bartolome, you don't get what you get because you're so smart." And he says, and I turn and I pointed to the city council opponent, which he wants himself said, said, and he says, "You get what you get because they're so stupid." Now, he said this 30, 35 years ago. But the real issue comes down to this, is that no one has had any training in order to do this job. We haven't had a mayor in the city that was ever a mayor someplace else who came with the qualifications, the skills, and everything else to properly do that job. We've never had a city councilman who was ever a city councilman before. And I had talked to you, some of you, about let's correct all of that and that what we need to do is to get the information that people need, the resources and everything else, so that they know and understand what their jobs are and how to execute those jobs and where to find help from. There's been two or three efforts of that already, but they have fallen through. But we can't give up. It's not that you're so stupid. It's that you're not educated in doing what you're supposed to be doing. No one's ever told you how, no one's ever showed you how. But it's time that you really begin to look seriously at going back to the basics, doing what we need to make sure that the deliberation that you had in this room just, I seem, an hour ago, is something that's a practice that takes place the day before the meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The last speaker for the Goodest Community is Arlene Dawson.
I'm the last one. Anyway, we're at the close of 2024. The biggest issue I have had this year is that we went over budget. And I kind of have fought with the entire city of Niagara Falls because there shouldn't have been a vacant seat in this council chambers. These reported from Niagara Zat, and Ms. Jackson Dawson was the only two individuals sitting in these chambers. And I have to say, I got a chance to actually see you guys act like, do your job, talk to each other, you know, and I thought, this does happen. However, the sad part about it is there has not been a financial review that I know of this year. How on God's earth do you review an upcoming year's budget? And you don't have a clue of what, the closing year budget? How much did you spend? What did you spend on? Do we need to increase the budget or do we not need to increase the budget? It shouldn't be just the mayor's decision. These are the things that you should really have in the forefront of your head by October, if not September of the next year. As Mr. Hamilton said, we need to be reviewing what is we have done, what can we do better, how we want to go forward. I, I have the opportunity to look at that budget book. Boy, y'all got millions of dollars screwed up in there that are undesigned. So you can't tell me that we are a poor city. And I can tell you for my accountability, in the past five years, we have squandered a hundred, over a hundred million dollars. And the city of Niagara Falls don't look no better than it did when Ms. Jackson brought a happy tail off the plane in Europe and parked here. What? You've got to do some serious thinking. Why does the city still look the same? Where is a over a hundred million dollars? By the time the governor dropped her money, 58 million dollars came here, four more million, no, 3 million dollars came from the replace funds. There were further money, it just rolled money in here. But I give you credit, we've got some beautiful police cars. We did it now, we see those. We clearly see the police cars. But there's got to be a question to yourself. When are we going to stop being the model of children of late 19? We, we can't keep doing it. We can't cry about the dogs, we can't cry about the parks, we can't cry about our kids. We, we need to be making decisions to make things better. So I, I, I agree with Kenny. One, corporate council should not be here. That's a huge conflict of interest. You need to hire your own independent attorney. And I am very sorry, but I have sat and I have watched the actions in this council meetings. There happens to be an overwhelming of bias in here. And that bias should never come from an attorney that's supposed to be providing you with answers. So, and the city charter, I don't know how you live with it. But I, I guarantee you, I know it can be changed. And if you believe in yourself, and if you've got a little bit of faith from God, I know you can make a difference. And that's what it's really going to tell me. And I go and I pray for all of you every day, every night. You, you, you guys need some help. You need some guidance. And I said, "Y'all ladies from the military said, there is a good package of train to train with the policemen and everything else." I got a place for my police to come to my house as soon as I come. Whoop, they right there. But anyway, you, you've got to figure out on all levels how it is that you make a change for the city of Niagara Falls. Because this would be a beautiful city. And I will be the very first to tell you before 2025 kicks in. A 6,000 state leader is not it.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson, your time is up. Thank you so much. That was our last speaker for the Goodest Community.
Meeting's adjourned.